I will call to order the study session for the Plan and Commission of San Clemente, California for Wednesday, September 16th, 2020. And Gabriel, could you call a roll, please?
Yeah, Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Here.
Commissioner Crandall?
Here.
Chair Pro Tim Wu?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Blackwell?
Here.
And Chair Rowland?
Here. And we have one item on our study session, commercial pickup parking stalls. And Gabriel's gonna lead us in this one, so floor is yours, Gabriel.
Okay, thank you. And there is a presentation on this that we'll display. So if we can pull up that presentation. Great. Okay, get started. So, next slide, please. Great. So, this study session, we'll discuss the use of parking stalls at commercial developments exclusively for vehicle parking, for customer convenience activities such as pickup services. Staff, we have observed a trend of existing private parking stalls in local commercial centers that are being repurposed for customer vehicle parking. And exclusively, and that's for pickup of consumer goods that are purchased in advance. So, the intent of this study session is to discuss that trend, the applicability of the municipal code, and, you know, if there are any potential impacts foreseen with this type of use. Next slide, please. So, some of the observations that staff has made, we've noticed that these pickup stalls are usually associated with, primarily with, commercial chain businesses. It's not something exclusive to San Clemente. This is also observed in other cities, at least I've seen throughout California. Also, that the pickup service is usually associated with an app or an online customer order that's made in advance. Also, that the pickup stalls observed are in existing parking areas with existing commercial developments. So, what I mean by that is that typically, the projects that the plan commission sees for new projects usually aren't identified in the parking plan that they are going to restrict parking for the purposes of picking up goods from a particular location. And then, you know, last point is that a lot of these restriped parking stalls, you know, they're distinguished from all the other parking, the parking area. Usually, it might be color striping, and there's signage associated with it, informing the customer that the stall is to be used for pickup services. Next slide, please. Okay. So, this is intended for customer convenience, and obviously, that if you observe these pickup stalls, you'll notice most of these pickup stalls are the closest stalls to an entrance to a business, so the businesses, you know, prioritizing these stalls for customer convenience and for that pickup service. Also, that, you know, when I've been out to observe some of the pickup stalls, particularly at Target, that there's a business associate from Target that will bring it out, the goods purchased to the customer's vehicle when they're parked in the pickup stall. And, and the pickup stall turns over pretty quick, at least in my observation, in less than than five minutes. So, there's more turnover that I've seen, and maybe that's a little bit quicker than what we typically would expect from a regular visit to the store, parking in the parking lot, and then shopping inside the store. So, what are some of the existing businesses that are, that are doing this right now? Target, I gave that example, you know, their retail store, they've been doing this already, as well as Lowe's Hardware at Plaza Pacifica, and Albertson's, so it's also used for grocery stores. Albertson's is an example. The Ralph's Grocery Store in Talega, and also restaurant type uses, Starbucks does do this. And it's been a little bit more common recently, or at least on an interim basis, for a lot of restaurants, right? So, the city did dedicate public stalls for the purpose of pickup, and that was because of some of the restaurant closures that occurred due to the COVID-19 pandemic, where they were limited to takeout only. So, we'll take a look at the example of Target, and I provided this example in the Plan Commission's packet, and so this is how it works. This is what they provide on their website. If you go to the next slide, please. I'm sorry, next slide? So, this, this is how it works. So, you'll see this on the Target website, and they do make this available at a lot of Target establishments. So, you go on your, your app for Target on your smartphone, and then you purchase the items that you want to pick up. So, you do that in advance from, you can do that from home, or wherever that may be. And, and then you wait for the notification that it's ready to be picked up. You drive up to the Target, you park in the parking stall, you wait there, notify that you've arrived, and then the associate will come out, and they'll load your car, so there's actually no physical interaction between anyone working at Target and the customer. So, so it is customer convenience, but, you know, maybe during COVID-19, it's also a way to prevent physical contact. And that's what I heard from the store associate that I had talked to there. So, what Target is doing right now, they, they've actually repurposed 18 parking stalls that were there that were unrestricted, and they restripped it to accommodate eight vehicles that can drive up and, and park anytime for pickup services. And I'll show you an example of what that looks like. Next slide, please. So, these photographs demonstrate what they've done at Target. These aren't the closest parking stalls to the entrance to Target, so it's a little bit different than what I mentioned before. So, this is maybe the outlier from what I'm gonna also present to you later. But you could see that they've restricted the parking, so they did have 18 to allow for eight vehicles to park. You could see the signage that they have added. There are some loading areas where, you know, an associate can come and, I guess, bring a card and then load the items into the, to the vehicle, so enough space for them. And so, so that is occurring right now. This is occurring without the business requesting any permits from the city. And, next slide, please. And Lowe's is another example of a business that is doing this too. So, I pulled this example from the website, so they give some instructions that are pretty easy to follow. And this is a little bit different than Target, because there are two options for a customer. So, the customer does order in advance, so they would use an app to, or order online to order, and they would arrive at Lowe's, and they have the choice of either picking up the item in store, or someone brings the items out to the car, so the curbside pickup. So, those two options are available. For the Target option, it was only an associate coming out to the vehicle. And, so we saw that at the, at the Lowe's location. And next slide, please. So, here's an example of what that looks like. So, there were six parking stalls that I observed. And this is a little bit different from Target, because these are parking stalls that are in closest proximity to the entrance to the store. So, it definitely is convenient for those that decide to use the pickup or curbside service. And, so they're also marked with signage, and I don't think they are restriped in a different way. So, they are using the existing striping. So, it wasn't restripped like the example of Target. They are taking advantage of the existing striping in the parking lot. Next slide, please. Previous slide, sorry about that. Let's see. Okay, I'm sorry, next slide. Okay, this, this photo didn't come out too well. This, this is when all the fires were, were definitely at their, their peak, and a little, little difficult to make up the signs. But this is the Albertson's at Plaza Pacifica, so they actually have two parking spaces that are reserved for customer pickup. And, so you can order online and then pick up the items by parking at those two stalls. But, something interesting to note, and it's also the case for the Lowe's store, this Albertson's also has a space that's reserved for law enforcement as well, so that's something unique. Lowe's does have two spaces in their parking area that are reserved for veterans. That's something a little bit different than pickup stalls. Next example, please. Slide. So, this photograph shows a Starbucks at the courtyards at Talega, and there are four spaces that were observed for customer pickup activities. And so, works in a similar way. You do order in advance through a Starbucks app, and you do that in advance, and then you arrive at Starbucks, and then you could pick up that order. You actually do have to get out of your vehicle, my understanding, and you pick up the item inside the store that's usually waiting there at the counter. And so, I've seen that happen a few times already there. And so, so it is used for, for food service. Next slide, please. This isn't in San Clemente, but this was, I think, Sana Ana or Tustin. So, this, what I thought was unique about this photograph, this is a commercial center, but these two parking stalls are not dedicated to any particular business. It's actually something that's coordinated for all businesses in the commercial center. So, you could tell by the signage that it's directing people that they can pick up items there. So, it's delineated by a letter and a number, and then it looks like there's also like a flag type sign on that pole. So, it kind of lets customers know that that is the D parking, and that they can pick up items there. So, I'm not entirely sure how, how that works at that commercial center. I just saw it this weekend, but I thought it was unique, because all the other examples that I've been showing you relate to a very specific business. So, next slide, please. So, one question can be, well, you know, how does the code apply here? And, you know, I was looking at our, our parking code, and there is a section that does require review of parking areas, either with a discretionary permit, which you're used to, seen with new development projects, or when parking areas are restripped. And so, when I was wondering if, if there needs to be any review here, you know, I think it can be considered in this category of restriping a parking area. And then, you know, if we did consider it a restriping of the parking area, the code doesn't identify the process for reviewing that restriping. So, there there are ways that that could be done. So, one example could be an amendment to a site plan permit. And that could be done in, in several different ways. So, it could be considered as a, you know, a minor amendment to the site plan permit, or consider it insignificant modification to an approved application. And so, the city planner determines if it's an insignificant modification. And that's based on if those changes are considered minor, and that the changes would have no public impact or concern. And so, if there is considered to be public impact, then it would go to zone administrator. If it's both public impact and, and public concern, then it would go to the Plan Commission. So, that, I think that's what we have to work with here. You know, as staff, we do recommend that, you know, we do think it's, it's minor, at least from what I've seen so far. But, really what we've seen at a lot of these businesses in the parking lot is that they're limited to a few parking spaces out of the entire parking supply. And, so, you know, that, that is, you know, pretty minor, but we also don't know how this is going to evolve in the future. And so, we are kind of looking at this at, on a case by case basis. We actually haven't issued any permits for this at all yet. We haven't had any of these businesses request permits from the city. Let's. We have checked in with code compliance about any complaints that the public has provided to the city about these pickup stalls, and we haven't received any complaints. I was notified by code compliance. So, one of, one of the questions regarding public impact or concern, you know, we were, as staff, curious to know what would be a threshold Plan Commission would be, would consider where such activities would cause a public impact or cause for public concern. So, that could be part of the discussion later on, so I just wanna let you know that we are interested to know that. So, in terms of talking about this topic, we, I did prepare some questions there in your staff report. I did provide in the presentation here. So, these are the questions that may be helpful, and you might have your own questions that I'll be happy to answer. So, one question is, do restricted parking stalls for pickup activities create a parking problem for commercial centers by limiting choice parking stalls from regular use? Another question, should restricted parking stalls be permitted only at, at commercial sites where the minimum parking requirements are exceeded? Right, so only if there's a surplus that's available, and then they could use that surplus. And then, third is, should restricted parking stalls require administrative or discretionary approvals? Next slide, please. And then, fourth question, what considerations may be necessary when new commercial projects are reviewed through the discretionary process? You know, what would Plan Commission be reviewing? And then, fifth, is there a maximum share of parking that should be considered for parking stalls? So, when is it considered excessive? You know, right now, we're seeing in the range of six to eight stalls, and the example of Target, they actually repurposed 18 parking stalls. And then, the last question, is there a threshold where the percentage of pickup parking stalls may negatively impact onsite parking accessibility? And that's the end of the questions that staff is, would be interested to have answered by the Plan Commission. But, last slide, please. The recommendation by staff is, we request the Plan Commission discuss the commercial pickup parking stalls as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the Plan Commission may have.
Thank you, Gabriel. Does anyone have any questions or want to kick off the discussion of this?
Jim, this is Chris, I have a few questions for Gabriel. If I may?
Please.
Gabriel, have you considered the impact of regulating parking stalls without looking at each commercial CCNRs? So, CCNRs are the covenants and restrictions that run with the land filed with the state. And typically, a developer files CCNRs with the knowledge that each building, one day, may be owned by a different owner. And there's specific rules and regulations in there, how parking is to be shared for reciprocal parking agreements. If these individual tenants now, on their own, start reserving spots for themselves without complying with the, well, clearly, they're not complying with CCNRs, because they're supposed, they're not allowed to do that under the CCNRs, how is the city going to manage that?
Yeah, you know what? In my experience, I haven't, because we haven't had a lot of new commercial centers. I don't recall if we condition projects to have CCNRs for commercial developments reviewed by the city. And we do that for our residential developments. So, if that's not the case, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be aware of what the CCNRs do say, and there may not be a say that the city has in the CCNRs. And so, I could be wrong, and if someone on the Plan Commission does know if we have we have done that recently, then, then that would definitely be something I would want to look into a little bit more.
I'm only familiar with at least one complex in San Clemente, and that's the area that's on Lopada and Pico. And I know each building is owned by a different owner, and the developers had to file the CCNRs with the city when, obviously, when the whole thing was being put together. And I'm not quite sure how the parking, and I have no idea how the parking requirements are met. When you have a reciprocal parking agreement, when you have 10 tenants and three or four buildings sharing parking, all of a sudden, yeah, so I don't know how the parking requirements are met. But then when each tenant starts reserving their own spots, well, that one, that violates the CCNRs, and two, I don't know if that formula changes.
Yeah, and, you know, my assumption right now, and if we're thinking about, like, the example might be like Starbucks and the CCNRs that you're thinking about, you know, I am not aware if there is approval by the center owner to be able to do that. So I am making the assumption that they do have an approval to do that from the owner, but not necessarily from the city.
So just for your information, the only way, there is no owner approval because each building has a different owner. So the only way they would get approval, which they didn't, is to have a majority of the owners or all the owners vote to approve.
Right.
I would think, too, that if it's a CCNR issue, that's a contract between the owners and not, probably not something the city's going to get involved with, but in addition to that, there's, like, if they have a condition of approval and they need to require X number of parking spaces, that's where we would get involved, you know, with the owner for, if they somehow didn't have X number of parking spaces as a result of this.
Well, that's the thing. If one business or one building has to have X number of parking spaces, and that X includes the parking spaces from the reciprocal parking agreement from the other property, and all of a sudden that other property is limiting those spaces, who's looking at that?
We, you know, Commissioner, we typically aren't looking at that. You know, there are, in some cases, there are CCNRs in the city that do have provisions that require the city to approve changes to a CCNR. But I think you're referring to an instance where there is no change that is made, and then the business is conducting the activity without that kind of approval, or even requesting the change in the CCNR with some consideration from the city, right?
Yeah, and then the city gets pulled into a discretionary approval, and then the city discretionarily approves something that could violate the, you know, conditions that run with the land.
Yeah, I would definitely would have to look into that one more, but, you know, in terms of typically what we approve at the city, you know, we may approve something that may not be consistent with the CCNRs that were established for a particular center.
Yeah, I'm going to jump in on there. One thing, we don't want to get involved with CCNRs. We don't enforce them, and that's between agreeing parties that are in the development. And I'm kind of the opinion that everything that goes on here affects the businesses that are there. That's the only, that's the only one that's going to be hurt if there is a slowdown or parking that is not available real close by. So I think that's kind of self-governing on that point, and we don't want to get in-between businesses as far as, I think, one place that did it was, take for instance, 24 Hour Fitness, and the adjacent business that was also in the building, they went ahead and labeled, okay, no parking in certain stalls for, it was reserved for the business, and then 24 Hour Fitness had theirs. That's between them and their joint agreement. We don't involve in that. And all of this is on your honor. Nothing is enforced. I mean, they've got a pickup stall, somebody wants to go in there and park permanently for an hour or two, there's no law or ordinance that says they can tow that car away. And I don't know if we want to get to the point of saying, oh, well, we're going to police this one. We're not going to police the parking in these parking lots. So I'm kind of the opinion that we're actually helping the parking situation by running more cars through there and allowing them to have a pickup. Sitting there for five minutes, I've used the one at Habit Burger a number of times, their offload smores, and it's great. You actually stay somewhere else in the parking lot until your time for the pickup, you give them a text, and they say it's ready, you pull up to the parking stall, you're there three, four minutes at the most. So it's more efficient use of a parking space than people going in there and walking down the routes and leaving their car there for a long time. But Gabriel had mentioned the different uses of designation for parking stalls for handicap and electric charging ones are the only ones that we basically designate and enforce. If they want to designate some for veterans, so be it. If they want to designate some for first responders, so be it. It's only going to affect their business and their business alone, and I think it'll self-cover. So I'm not sure, as long as they provide the total number of spaces that we require by code, if they exceed it, great, if they want to designate them, certainly no problem there. If they have a parking agreement, maybe they're a waiver. It may be something we need to worry about, but other than that, I don't see it needs any action at this time in itself.
Did you want to jump in? Don?
Yeah, a couple comments, I kind of agree with Bart in many ways. We always have treated, the city's always treated the HOAs, the CCNRs, as the person involved. As long as they don't exceed our city ordinances or city code, and they're supposed to regulate themselves, when they go to suddenly violate their own CCNRs and increase ceiling height or parking spot, then we kind of step in. But we assume they're managing their own assets, I think is a fair assumption, I think was what Bart was alluding to. And Bart's right, we only require electrical vehicle and ADA spots be guaranteed, and they have to be accessible, and they have to be okay in the parking lot where those people get to the business's choice. Yeah. The only other question I would have with some of these shopping centers, they don't have CCNRs, is how they manage all their customers that are in the center? In other words, you go to some of these centers, and here's, you know, Stater Brothers or Ralph's, they're the big, they're the 2,000-pound gorilla on the site, and how about the little mom-and-pop donut shop that's 50 feet away? Do they get part of that stall? How do they get a part of that? In other words, it works out okay for Target and Talega, they're isolated, it's their parking lot. But there's other parking stalls and parking things that are fenced, same with Lowe's, they're pretty much self-contained down there. But you get some of the other malls, shopping centers, how about the guy that says, hey, me too? I want somebody to be able to come in and order a dozen donuts for me, and I'll run out and throw it in their car, and they'll pay me for it, and we just stripe it for Target. And that's where we might run into some issues, or maybe we have to make sure that, put a guidance to the mall owners that they manage their resources for all their tenants.
This is...
Let me, yeah, go ahead, Chris.
I agree with Bart, but I thought I heard Gabriel saying that he's considering doing discretionary approval for dedicated parking through the planning commission or through an administrative process, which then would bring the city into this...
Greg, Mark? No, Commissioner, so what I'm saying is, if we were to start requiring permits for this activity, that's what we would recommend as staff, is to review them administratively. We haven't issued any kind of permits for any of these activities at this point, rather than having to go through the discretionary process, either zone administrator or planning commission, right? And obviously, we can discuss that further. Now, the other, there are times where you might be reviewing this in the discretionary process, and that's going to be when the development isn't there, right? When it's proposed to the city. So, you know, you review developments right now that are proposing new parking stalls, and the planning commission has the ability to condition or, you know, assess pickup parking stalls if they're proposed, or, you know, potentially even if they aren't proposed, right? We are seeing that trend. There's the ability of the planning commission to weigh in, particularly when there's discretionary project that is going to come to the planning commission anyway.
Yeah.
Mike, yes, please.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. So this is a very interesting discussion. This is why I brought Gabriel's attention a few months ago, because I had witnessed what was happening at Target, and I thought, you know, this is worth examining as a city in how we apply our design concepts to parking and how those designs actually fit the way we use space now. You guys all remember, and Jim, I promise I won't go on forever on this, but this is an important point. You remember the Stans project that came through, and we looked at, it was a basketball court and maybe a half-pipe for skateboarding and kind of a collaborative environment, it's kind of the Google model for the workplace. That was kind of a new take on, in a departure from what had been so accepted for so many years as traditional, you know, having office space or cubicles. And it was found that through that type of collaboration, the workplace productivity increased 15% or more, just by redesigning the way the space worked for people. And this is another opportunity for us. I mean, I'm not suggesting we go around and redesign every parking lot in town, but the way people use parking lots in the way I believe that people are going to continue to work or use parking lots is going to change. We're clearly seeing signs of it now, online orderings, tele-orders, et cetera. So the interest here was to, you know, bring this to the commission for discussion so that we could start thinking about, you know, proactively, like in a way that, you know, the advanced planning group would, or, you know, forward planning. We're thinking about things in the future and how people actually use space. We touched on a few points, accessibility. If anybody has a spot that's close to the establishment, it should be reserved for ADA folks that would utilize those stalls, and then the priority shifts outward from there. I don't know how less convenient is it for an online or a phone patron to be in the front of the store versus the back of the parking lot? They don't get out of their car either way. So we would put the burden on the, you know, on the establishment to have a runner that goes out and brings the stuff out there, and then revisit that over time as that type of method of shopping increases, then we revisit it. But my concern initially was that those eight stalls at Target, and all the other examples that were provided by staff, which was excellent, even the Starbucks with a single stall set aside, and they put their own sign out, and I venture to say, you know, they didn't get a permit either, they just kind of decided that was going to be their dedicated spot, and they were going to regulate that on their own accord, being completely, you know, just ignoring the other folks in the establishment, you know, in the center. So what if Quiznos wanted one? What if the UPS store wanted one or two? The UPS store of all uses in that center, where the example was shown by staff, they should have dedicated parking because they have the big vehicles, delivery vehicles, coming in and out all day long. And studies show that online sales are at an all-time high. People are not getting in their car as much as they used to. That's a fact. So why aren't we designing to that? You know, why aren't we thinking about this that way? Our own parking provisions in our code are outdated. There's no provision for compact stalls, yet we, in some parts of town, are struggling, and we're getting so creative, it's almost to the point of absurdity when we're trying to make it work for folks, and that's our job, is to make it work. But we're doing two or three layers of reciprocation on parking in some parts of the city, as you all know. And, hey, it's working. To a couple of commissioners' points, yeah, people will find a way, they'll just make it work, and I know that to be true as well, and I believe that. You know, I'm human, and I do, you know, you find a place, and water finds a path, at least resistance, and it gets where it needs to go. But in terms of regulation as a body, as a land use body, we're a planning commission, we need to be, I think, concerned about this from a regulatory perspective and designing it so that it actually does work and it really meets the current needs of our community. Now, this isn't a new concept, it's in the journals, other cities have already started to get a little more proactive about how they design parking lots. And to Gabriel's point, 100%, with a new project, we have an opportunity to put new eyes on it and be creative, but when entities are coming in after the fact, after, you know, groups like ours in staff time have put so many, many hours into the design of a project, the circulation patterns, ingress egress, the number of stalls, and for an establishment to come in and say, yeah, we're going to take these eight stalls here, and we're going to dedicate these to online shopping, well, they're not considering all the work and consideration that went into the original parking study. Are they going to prohibit, say this takes off and gets very popular, and trends demonstrate that that is in fact happening at an alarming rate, in fact, just ask Amazon. So we assume there's going to be success in this area, and so with that assumption, I'm not talking about taking a snapshot last week or today, I'm talking about, you know, in the near future, maybe within the next year or two, when those eight stalls now, you have like 20 people that have done online orders, and they are queuing in the drive aisles, and they are blocking access to stalls that would normally be available to regular patrons, they have now caused a prohibition of access and taken those stalls effectively out of inventory. So when we're doing parking counts, that's great. If we have a, in my opinion, if we have a project with a surplus, example, the outlets, right now, there's a surplus. It could change, depending on the uses that come in and how things are fortified and patina over time, and that could all, they could suddenly have a deficit, but they don't now. But when we look at something like this and try to determine whether or not it goes to planning commission for public hearing, and for the public to have exposure to and ability to comment on, or stay at staff level without notice, I have a real problem with that because these projects, Target's an excellent example, the level of discretion that was applied to that project, blood, sweat, and tears, staff, and various commissions and councils before us, and there was a lot of talk, a lot of discussion about the parking. We're about, there's been a subdivision, and there's a new development that's going to go in at some point that this commission heard and voted on, and we all know it's going to happen eventually. Suddenly, the character and the way that that area is used is going to change. So then we feather in this online shopping... So then we feather in this online shopping, accessibility, careers. Now, Target's in the game where they're doing heavy online shopping as well or promoting that. Folks are buying stuff online, having it sent to them or doing the quick pickup. That's taking off, just like the Google model. It was innovative. It was efficient. And that's what is happening here. There's a demand for innovation. There's a demand for efficiency, but we're doing spot planning on, I'm sorry, somebody may get offended by that term. We're doing spot treatment on this. And I think it's early enough now that we can really think about this. And if this discussion goes on and on, that's great. That's a good thing because if an applicant comes in, say it's Starbucks and they want to add, take one stall out of inventory, then Quiznos wants to, then the cleaners wants to, are we going to prohibit them? At what point is there an upper limit? Or do we, or do we create an environment of unfairness for the patrons or for the retailers in that center? Where do we, where do we draw the line? When do we say no? So if we are more proactive and we come in and we look at, we maybe evaluate, I'm just shooting in the dark here, if we evaluate all of our parking inventory, all the parking lots in the city and we determine in advance what stalls could be dedicated to this sort of thing while maintaining accessibility, not only for ADA but regular patrons in a way that's efficient, I think we're getting somewhere. And if we think about the layout, rather than causing a logjam up in front of Target with those eight stalls today, maybe it's 16 now tomorrow because this is wildly popular. And again, studies show this is undisputable. This is how people are shopping. This is what people are doing. We're going to see fewer people driving to a market and walking in. As much as, as difficult as that may be to wrap your mind around for a lot of us, that's, that's what it is. My kids don't like to go to the store.
I think you just made your point.
Yeah.
Putting them in front of the building is not a problem. Things are changing.
So, yeah, so maybe that's how we, it's a good point, Bart. So we design to that and how we use space.
We don't, we don't design things. We regulate, we don't design.
But we do by regulation and standards.
And I think one size doesn't fit all. I don't know how for every possible business model, we could write an ordinance that would suit absolutely every situation. I just don't think it's possible. We can try, we can say encourage it, and we're not going to enforce it. We don't have the manpower to go out to parking lots and see if they're using it properly. The businesses are going to, why are they doing this? Because they think it helps their business. So who's being hurt by this? People who want to go inside? Well, they're going to hear that and change their plan. They're going to do whatever is the path of least resistance to sell the most product. And I, we, I just don't see where we've got a crystal ball yet. It may happen someday, but.
Well, let me, let me, I just want to make sure everyone has a chance to chime in. So Zen, did you have something that you wanted to add to this?
Yeah, just not much, but I think the business needs to be allowed to experiment via trial and error to adapt to the new reality. So basically, I just let them to experiment. In theory, dedicated parking space will reduce the availability of parking for the general public, but we haven't seen that. We haven't seen a parking spew over because of the reduced parking. We haven't seen the encroachment into accessible parking, et cetera. So we haven't seen much problem. It may change because large commercial plaza designed their parking lot to meet peak season demand. And we're not there yet. So there's no problem now. It doesn't mean that during Christmas, there's no problem, but we don't, we don't know yet. So my recommendation is we keep observing, knowing what's happening and see what's happening after the holiday season. If something comes up, we can try to dig out something to help. So that's my.
I think for me, some of the conversation has been about sort of taking parking spaces out of inventory into like sort of a special category. And I kind of see it differently. I see this as, I mean, parking in general is a, is a, is a bad land use, right? It's, it's, you know, it's just storage for private property while people do the business they actually are going to be doing. And this makes that land use, I think, much more dense. So using some of the numbers that Gabriel's given us, for instance, if they've observed people are parked there for about five minutes before they leave. Now, if usually they go to Target and they shop around and they spend a half hour at Target, that's 30 minutes they're using a parking stall versus five minutes for this other type. That means, you know, how many five minute increments? There's six five minute increments in a half an hour. So that means you're actually getting six parking stalls worth of use out of that one parking stall. To me, this is something that we, we don't, I think we want to encourage. And I would even say, go so far as to say, organizations, companies that can make use of this kind of model, not everyone can, but organizations that can, if they dedicate a certain number of stalls to this quick use and they've got the infrastructure to support it, like, you know, people can't get out of their cars and they get service, they have a mobile app, all that sort of a thing for the infrastructure, then we should be able to say, you know, change our parking math a bit and say, well, you don't need as many parking stalls to, in your shopping center because you've made some more dense. That would be a good thing because we see places that are overparked. We've had two in the last few years that have actually taken a part of their parking lot and built on it, built retail on it or banking on it. So that's a good thing, right? A better land use than, you know, than parking. So I think we should be looking at it as really a great opportunity, as a, perhaps a sea change in how we can handle parking. We're always going to need those long-term parking, people are going to go into stores and such. But more and more, as we see, there's a, there's a change going on. I think it's worth noticing that while this was, a lot of this was pushed by the pandemic and we're still, you know, operating under that, part of it is sort of a requirement of the pandemic. The infrastructure existed, was pretty much there when the pandemic hit in order to do this. And some places were doing this slowly, like turning their retail stores into more warehouse type of stores. So there's a lot of areas like this where the pandemic has actually accelerated adoption of, you know, new technologies, new processes, that sort of a thing. So I would hope that we could look at this as a real opportunity to reduce the amount of parking we require. And it would be great if we could do it for smaller businesses too and take out restaurants. They also need some infrastructure in terms of, you know, apps that do this sort of thing. But that's, that's, you know, I think that there are probably businesses that provide that as a service, can provide that to these kind of smaller mom pop type places. So I get kind of excited about that if we have the right restrictions on it, that we could actually start to turn, you know, larger portions of our parking quite reasonably into, you know, more usable space. Anyway, that was, that was my main observation. There were some, the specific questions that were asked. One thing, one thing Gabriel asked is what was public impact or concern? I think we've been talking about that some. I think it's probably pretty clear in my opinion. It's the impact is probably positive as long as we do it right. Oh, I think too, as far as the discretionary review question is concerned, I kind of like the idea of a discretionary review at first because it's just because it's a new thing and people might have comments on it. And we're going to figure out that we got some things right and some things wrong about it. So doing a discretionary review on something like this for a year or two years or, you know, whatever the right number is. And then we, as often happens, we'll reach a point where we say, oh, you know what? Every time we get one of these now, it's, it's pretty automatic and there's no, there's no funny stuff. We know enough about it. We don't have to do this as a discretionary review. We can do it as administrative. So anyway, that's kind of the way that I've seen it. We've got about seven minutes left, so more comments? Looks like Don, you got more?
Yeah, a couple of issues, I think I kind of agree with you in some ways, Jim. First off, some of the questions staff asked was, are they restricted to commercial sites where there's minimum parkings or exceeded? And the answer to that is yes. We've tended to overpark our parking lot multiples the last 10 or 15 years. Some of the later developments, I've said this before, the outlets, Ocean View, some of these other are overparked. So now we're converting, put a bank in in front of those. And so there's other adaptive reuses coming in. And then of course, Target is going to take a part of their parking lot and put it in their old shopping center. Concern there with Target is they've now taken 18 spots. Right now, they're in the happy land because spots that they have on the west parking lot, which are, cars are parked in, probably employees are going to go away. So did they overcompensate? In other words, they still, we still have to make sure that we have certain minimum basic parking requirements. And maybe Target may be in an overshoot here just because they're in a happy place right now, but as soon as they start plowing under that west parking lot for the development, they're not going to be. So we have to make sure that whatever the 18 spots they took away, they might have to give up. Some of them, get more efficient in their parking spots to make sure they meet their basic parking requirements. Most of the time, I would let market, market drive it. But I'm concerned about the little guy in some of these shopping centers. That's where we have to come up with a city guidance or for the, and I think most of this should be ministerial, I mean administrative, I should say, so that the big grill on the block doesn't push the little guy out. So that, you know, when we come to a certain, you know, Ocean View or some other, you know, parking, parking, shopping centers, that Ralphs and Staples and all that stuff, don't munch the little guy. There's, there's looks in there that, okay, shopping mall owner, if you want to put certain dedicated high back pickup, which there is for everybody. And that's my pull. Other than that, I think we ought to, you know, I think it's a great topic of discussion. I think we should continue to work, you know, some more amenable, creative solutions in parking, striving it. Thank God for Goodman Engineering.
And just to, one of the things that Don brought up, we kind of traditionally, our parking, you know, has been sort of set in stone. This, this is the parking math and this is what you're approved for and this is what's required and that sort of thing. We may be in a, in a situation where, or a time when we need to be a little more, I don't know, you know, flexible or, you know, make it easier to change what we've done if the circumstances to do that are right. That's a pretty broad statement. But, you know, but, you know, if people come in with some innovative solution, we, it would be nice if we had a structure or an ability to be able to say, at least on a discretionary way, you know, let's look at that, let's think about that. And maybe that's something that'll, you know, actually, if that's going to actually reduce the, you know, the parking demand or increase the density of the existing parking, things like that, then we should be willing, we should have the ability to hear that and make that decision.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, Jim, I, I'm excited about this discussion and the positions that the folks in the discussion have. I'm with you on this. I think that, you know, leading thought on this and continuing forward with, you know, an open mind in adapting to the way this space is used is going to be very important here. The discretionary piece, I'm with you 100% only because it's like anything else, you know, you've got a height limit in a zone and, you know, somebody wants to build 20 feet above that, it's going to, some discretion's going to need to be applied, some discussion's going to need to happen and considerations made. In this case, you know, we have our own parking standards don't really meet the model that we're discussing today. And that's where the discretionary part comes in. Those training wheels come off over time as we start to see this happening, feel more comfortable. Maybe we even modify our own regulations and adapt that and bring it up to, in my opinion, you know, make it more current. Innovation is the name of the game today and adapting to the way land is used is very important. So, yeah, I'm with you. I think, I think, I think there's going to be a lot more of this coming and I'm excited to see some things happening. Would definitely be open to talking about it some more. But when we're changing patterns of ingress and egress into, into these types of stalls, it's just, it changes the character for the parking situation there.
So, so let me just make sure, Gabriel, I'm not sure if we touched on every question you asked, but do you at least have enough from us to kind of move forward and take this to the next step?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's good. You know, I was, I didn't know if there was anything that came out of the discussion that, you know, you know, obviously, these minutes are reviewed by, by the city council and they look to the planning commission to kind of review these items in your study sessions. So perhaps that, that comes out of this, this study session. As far as discretionary, the only thing I advise right now, we are, we are kind of short. We did, we did lose two current planners that would work on these, you know, you know, working on a discretionary process for these, these parking lots. And so, so that actually may take some time. And so, you know, I do want to make the planning commission aware of the realities of trying to do that. And it's not that I don't think it's, you know, I don't think it's a, it's a bad idea to do that. I just want to bring your attention to that reality.
Are you short right now?
We're, we're two people short right now. And so, in current planning, and so we're short in associate planner and the community development technician. So it is a little bit harder for us to do that. And what it also means is that some of our long-range staff are more focused on trying to help out with current planning, just based on some of, you know, the applications that we do get in. There's an expectation there. So, so there is some work involved in terms of knocking on some of these businesses' doors and saying like, hey, it looks like what you have here, you can request approval from the city and going through that exercise and then getting them to submit the application. And then obviously going through the process of the discretionary review. So.
One thing, Gabriel, to my mind, in terms of that issue, I mean, we're not a, an enforcement body in terms of like, you know, you know, we're not code enforcement or anything, but just from a practical point of view, it seems like, you know, we are in a pandemic and the reason that people did this was to address the pandemic. And I'm, you know, I don't see any big complaints about it, at least during the pandemic. So I don't know if that's sort of, I don't know if I heard from the planning commission that, you know, we should be running out and knocking on these doors and telling them they have to, you know, come in and get a conditional permit for that, you know, as long as this pandemic is going on. So, you know, I don't know how others feels, but that was kind of the, that was my thought about it.
Gabriel, isn't the way it works. You'd have to go to city council at this point and say, planning commission has voiced a concern. Do you authorize us to spend the time and money and effort to pursue this before anything else happens? And then as far as, I would hate to see a per applicant who wants to re-stripe some stripes have to go through going to design review, the cost, time, staff effort to put together the reports. I think this is something that needs to be done at staff level with occasional reviews by possibly a portion of the planning commission, just to make sure we're going in the right direction. Boy, to re-stripe a couple of stalls, the cost to the city and to the applicant is pretty excessive for just that.
Yeah. I do think that is advisable to go to city council and to see if they do want these to go through that kind of discretionary review. So, you know, I think that is a good next logical step to be able to do that.
I would suggest before you go to city council, you reach out to downtown business and the chamber of commerce and say, do we have a problem here? Do we have a situation where their hands are at it? Are small businesses being discriminated against? And see what their answers are in the council, is my point.
One, one last thing, Chairman, that I'd advise, and maybe, you know, it looks like there's more to talk about here. So maybe this, this study session happens again on this topic. And so we could, maybe there's certain things that we could look at. You know, I think one of the commissioners brought up maybe other approaches that other cities are taking in terms of regulating this. So that might be good to see, right? in terms of regulating this. So that might be good to see, right? To see how cities are approaching it versus, you know, just, you know, acting right away and doing that. So, you know, I think that might make sense as a next step as well. So, you know, I think there's more information staff could have to better assess this type of parking. So that might work out as well.
I think if you could put together a tag team of maybe six or seven people, maybe a few commissioners, I'd be happy to attend this. We can take a trip out to Northern Europe and different parts of Europe, actually, not just northern, where this practice is live and well and is working.
On the current city budget, you're, we'll all travel on your credit card. I volunteer.
Important stuff about parking. I think Tuscan has some interesting parking solutions, but yeah. All right. Let's wrap this up, Gabriel. I think if you've got what you need for now, I think it sounds like there wouldn't be any problem with another study session on this and more discussion. So.
We'll do that.
So then, we will, why don't we, we're a few minutes over, but why don't we take three minutes, just so people, you know, can take a quick bio break or something if they want to. We'll take three minutes, and then we'll reconvene to begin our regular meeting. Somewhere that we are. I will call the order, the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, September 16th, 2020. Our next item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Bart, would you mind leading us in the pledge, please? And everyone else, if you could go on mute just so it's, it's easier to hear.
Okay, please place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is our roll call. Gabriel, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Brown.
Chair.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Chair Pro Tem Wu. I think he was on mute today.
Here.
Okay, great. Vice Chair Blackwell.
Here.
And Chair Rulon.
Here. Item four, special orders of business, we have none. Item five, minutes, we have two sets of minutes. The first one is the minutes from the regular Planning Commission meeting of August 19th, 2020, continued from September 2nd. Are there any requests for changes or motions to adopt?
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the City of San Clemente Planning Commission, August 19th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Motion by Wu, second by Brown. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Aye. Commissioner Kaczynski.
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
And Rulon votes aye, passes unanimously. Then we have the minutes.
You didn't ask for me to.
Oh, I beg your pardon. I'm sorry. Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Let me get you on my list here. Sorry.
They continue to.
So, passes unanimously. Then, next set of the minutes from the regular Planning Commission meeting of September 2nd, 2020. Any changes or motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Crandall. Call the roll. Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
And Rulon votes aye, passes unanimously. Oral and written communication. Members of the public may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. Speakers can submit their comments on agenda items to the Planning Commission electronically. Material may be emailed to scottm1@san-clemente.org. Transmitted by 3:00 p.m. on Planning Commission meeting days is recommended. The Planning Commission is not permitted to discuss or take action on items that do not appear on the agenda. And Gabriel, I believe we have one item under our oral and written communication, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct, Chairman. We do have an item that we received today, so I'll read that into the record.
Okay, and I will, I'll do the time. Go ahead.
Okay. This is regarding MCHP 2244, Public House. Plan Commissioners, my first impression of the proposed cafe and event center for 1533 North Alcume Real was positive. Bogey Rose had contacted me to describe the project, and it sounded like a winner for North Beach. The Historical Society has always supported adaptive reuse of historic buildings. Not having access to the plans prevented me from fully understanding the details of the modifications. At the Cultural Heritage Committee meeting on September 9th, I expressed support for the project overall, but opposed the wall along the street. I suggested that a short wall, as was approved for the Miramar Event Center project, would be appropriate. The report did not specifically mention that I saw that the wall was to be seven feet tall. It was not clear exactly how close the sidewalk it was to be located. Commissioner Wu raised the issue that code only allows a 42-inch wall, 72 inches with exception. It was also pointed out that our design guidelines also specify low garden walls. The discussion seemed to be more about how this project absolutely had to have its seven-foot wall and what could be done to make that happen for the applicant. A seven-foot wall at the sidewalk or anywhere else in the setback would be devastating, that it could visual impact upon the historic structure. Code specifically prohibits this. As Chairman Crandall pointed out, the north facade of the historic two-story building, story building is as important, if not more so, than the west facade on the street side. It has an amazing oriel window with stucco grill below and red tile roof above. That with, that with the exterior staircase with solid stucco balustrade is classic Spanish colonial reliable. It must be less visible. The agenda report refers to the existing underutilized outdoor landscape area. In the past 92 years, that underutilized area has provided a path of vision for the public to be able to appreciate the building's beauty. Granted, the foliage has been allowed to grow a little wild, but a seven-foot wall can not be trimmed, and those proposed sliding doors just would not provide the same view. I was also concerned that the agenda report did not mention that I saw the previous additions or exactly what part of the existing building is historic. The DPR form from the 2006 Historic Survey update refers to two historic buildings. The main story building and one-story outbuilding to the rear features a side gable roof clad with clay tile and wood stucco exterior cladding. The building is in good condition. Its integrity is good. In 2006, there was apparently a 2,496-square-foot addition, 1,682-square-foot warehouse, and 114-square-foot retail. In 2014, there was apparently a 516-square-foot addition as a stockroom. Where is that one-story building buried in those additions? Which building are they proposing to modify, the 2006 and 2014 additions, or the historic one-story building? Please have this project returned to the Cultural Heritage Commission with revised agenda report that contains answers to these questions. The public deserves an explanation for why a seven-foot wall blocking the view of a historic building is a good thing. Thank you, Larry Culbertson. That's the letter to proceed. That's it.
Thank you. Item seven is the consent calendar. We have no items on the consent calendar. And item eight is our public hearings. Just as a note, the, the, excuse me, I guess I don't have to do that. Item 8A is Via Pico Plaza, conditional use per permit for Pico Plaza in and out. And Katie Crockett is our planner on this. So Katie, you have the floor.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. I do have a presentation this evening, which IT will be pulling up for us in just a moment. While they do that, I'll just get started. The proposed project is a proposal for a new in-and-out drive-through restaurant at 115 Via Pico Plaza. Because it's a new commercial building, it requires a site plan permit, an architectural permit. The drive-through use requires a conditional use permit, and the signs require a discretionary sign permit. Next slide. The project is located at the intersection of Avenue de Pico and Via Pico Plaza, adjacent to the I-5 freeway. As such, this is a general plan designated gateway area, and Spanish Colonial Revival architecture is required. Next slide. The project proposal includes demolition of two two-story office buildings. You can see the existing street views here. The top is from Via Pico Plaza, and the bottom is from Avenue de Pico. Next slide. The overall project area is 76,509 square feet. The proposed 3,882-square-foot drive-through restaurant includes an outdoor dining area, surface parking, and new landscape. This plan, as well as the building design, is the product of collaboration between the applicant and their team, city staff, and the Design Review Subcommittee. Next slide. As you can see on the site plan, the building is located along the street frontages near the corner, and the outdoor dining area is prominently located at the corner, creating an inviting street scene. Parking and trash enclosure areas are located to the rear and side of the building. The project includes 51 onsite parking spaces where 38 are required. A previous version of the site plan included more parking, but the applicant added additional landscape, losing a few parking spaces at the recommendation of the DRSC. The drive-through queue is designed for 30 cars, which is significantly more than any other similar use as queue in San Clemente. By comparison, the Planning Commission approved a queue of 11 cars for Chick-fil-A and 16 cars for the new drive-through Starbucks on Pico, just on the other side of the freeway. Michael Baker and Associates completed a drive-through queue assessment based on sample surveys collected at three existing in-and-out sites chosen for their similar characteristics, such as location in a coastal community and proximity to a freeway. The maximum average peak hour queue at these other sites was 20 cars, indicating that in circumstances typical for in-and-out, the 30-car queue would be sufficient with no extra backup on site. Although, the site does have space for additional queuing. The city traffic engineering staff reviewed the traffic and circulation study, which included the drive-through queue analysis. Next slide. With the demand we're seeing at the newly opened Chick-fil-A, combined with the takeout and like outdoor-only dining options we're seeing with COVID precautions recently, the Design Review Subcommittee asked the applicant to think about several options for adding or for additional stacking within the proposed site plan beyond the 30 cars accommodated in a designated queue. Next slide. In response, the applicant provided two potential scenarios for additional stacking. The first is entirely on the subject site and would accommodate up to 40 cars. Next slide. The second shows stacking on the Pico Plaza site and would require the Pico Plaza management's approval. This option accommodates up to 42 cars. Both of these scenarios would represent unusual circumstances, as represented by the queuing analysis in the traffic study. But in the event this type of drive-through demand does happen, there are several options, all of which would require in-and-out staff to be out in the parking lot, helping to direct the flow of traffic and take orders. If you, I'm sure if you've driven through an in-and-out lately during COVID, you know they're well-equipped to handle these types of rushes. And should the COVID precaution still be ongoing if and when this in-and-out is constructed, which I think we all are hoping it won't be, but where we might expect to see this type or this level of drive-through demand, the city has enacted temporary outdoor operations procedures to accommodate these extenuating circumstances. Certainly, the 30-car queue, we would expect to accommodate the drive-through queue in, under normal, non-pandemic circumstances. Next slide. As part of the site improvements, both existing driveways into the site will be shifted away from the intersection. This creates a potential issue, which is kind of circled bare and red, due to the location of the existing median in Via Pico Plaza. If the median were left alone, drivers exiting from the Westerly driveway may be tempted to make kind of a wonky left turn around the median, where there's really not the correct space, and it's, would really be not safe. Next slide. In condition 3.18, engineering requires the applicant to address this safety concern by either shortening or lengthening the median. Shortening the median would allow left-hand turns out of both site driveways. Next slide. And lengthening the median in conjunction with posting a right-turn-only sign at the Westerly driveway would discourage drivers from turning out and around the median. The city engineer will review the plans for all work in the public right-of-way, but it will be done at the applicant's expense. Next slide. The applicants have been working with staff on the building design to ensure it meets the city's requirements of high-quality architecture in gateways and employs a Spanish Colonial Revival design. And they have made many changes in the design in response to DRSC comments as well. Lower picture is a previous design iteration and a top-up revision. Lower picture is a previous design iteration, and the top represents the current proposal. Changes specifically requested by the DRSC that can be seen here on the north elevation include the modification to the secondary tower. That's the one on the right. So that the two do not compete. It now is a square shape instead of rounded, and is shorter than the main tower. Additionally, you'll see that the DRSC's recommendation to remove the cutouts from the round towers to accommodate signs have been addressed. The sign on the primary tower will now be curved to fit with the architectural design of the building instead of the other way around. Other changes in response to the RSC comments seen here include the spacing of the window arches on either side of the primary entry. That has been modified to be more symmetrical, and the addition of the decorative detail within the window arches. Additionally, you'll note that the applicant has modified building writing to include large responses and modified their placement to better complement the architecture. Next slide. On the west elevation, which faces Pico, Avenida Pico, you can see the result of these same modifications. Let's see, next slide. The top elevation here is the primary north elevation facing Via Pico Plaza, and the bottom is facing the parking lot and the drive-through. That's the drive-through windows you see there under the colonnade. Details seen here, which on all elevations include clay tile roof elements. Staff has included the city's standard condition related to the type and application of the tile. That's Condition 5.11 in the resolution. You'll also note the smooth white stucco. Staff has included our standard condition on how that's to be applied as well. The arches on the colonnade over the drive-through, wrought iron detailing, divided light windows and doors, the public entries being accented by tower elements. These are all things that are in our design guidelines for Spanish colonial revival architecture. Next slide. The left elevation here is facing Avenida Pico. The right faces the rest of the shopping center to the east. The applicant has employed a simple design with traditional Spanish colonial revival elements while meeting the unique functionality required for the business. Also of note on these elevations, utility and equipment doors are a dark wood look in keeping with the architectural design. Next slide. The signs proposed meet the development standards with the approval of a discretionary sign permit. The signs include two halo illuminated channel letter signs pin-mounted with the in-and-out arrow logo. The monument sign is designed to be consistent with the building architecture, including a stucco base with wrought iron detail and halo illuminated individual channel letters and logo as well on that. Likewise, the menu board has the matching base and iron detail and finish. The directional signs for the drive-through are an appropriate design matching the stucco color with a wrought iron detail and routed push-through illuminated letters. Next slide. There is an existing non-conforming center identification pylon sign for Pico Plaza on the subject site. Because Pico Plaza is under different ownership and management, the in-and-out site is encumbered but doesn't benefit from this sign. Since the existing pylon will not include a panel for in-and-out, in-and-out has proposed a monument. Staff believes the location of the monument is warranted, and the required findings for a freestanding sign at the site have been made in the resolution. You'll find those on packet page 34 and 35. Next slide. The applicant proposes LED cove lighting, approximately 123 lineal feet, which was included in the master sign program. The Design Review Subcommittee expressed concern over this lighting and requested that staff get an opinion on this lighting as it pertains or not to signage and applicable case law. Staff did brief the city attorney's office on this issue, and the city attorney opined that the red LED cove lighting does not constitute a sign under our code and should be reviewed as a design element instead and evaluated under the architectural review and relevant standards and guidelines, not under the sign code. As such, staff does not recommend removal of this cove lighting for several reasons. First, the lighting is not what you often find at an in-and-out, in that it's a single line of LED and is not exposed, like what you see in the top-left picture. It's tucked within a cove in the facade, so it's not visible during the day at all and provides an indirect glow at night. Second, the applicant has significantly reduced the amount of cove lighting on the building in response to staff comments. The lighting will also be on a dimmer, as indicated in the master sign program and as required by Condition 5.14. Should it be determined by the city planner that it's too bright and tense, causing excessive glare, it can easily be dimmed. Last but not least, in a letter dated June 23, 2020, architect Henry Lenny, who consulted throughout the design of this project, states the following: "I am not concerned that it would negatively impact the integrity of the architecture." If the primary concern is that this does not fit with Spanish colonial revival architecture, I do take seriously the man who basically wrote our SCR design guidelines. And so with that, next slide. The project does qualify for a categorical exemption under CEQA for new construction of structures under 10,000 square feet in urbanized areas. The project is not located within the coastal zone, so no approvals from the Coastal Commission are required. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 20-022 approving the Pico Plaza in-and-out project as presented, with the caveat that the commission please remove Condition 4.3, which was included in error. This concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have of staff. Jim Lockington with In-N-Out is here representing the applicant, and I do believe he has some brief comments to make whenever appropriate. He has worked tirelessly with staff in refining the project to meet our high design standards. He's been a pleasure to work with. Additionally, traffic and engineering staff are on the call should the commission have questions for them, given the drive-through use. Lastly, staff has received many public comments in support of this project, which myself or Gabriel can read during the public comment portion of this hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Why don't we hear from the applicant, and then we'll do questions of the applicant and staff? So, Mr. Lockington, you've got 10 minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. I will not take the entire 10 minutes, which should gratify everyone. Good evening, City of San Clemente planning commissioners, city staff, and the public listening online. I'm the In-N-Out Burger's manager of new store development, and I am very, very pleased to present In-N-Out at this hearing. First, I'd like to thank the numerous city staff and the Design Review Subcommittee members who participated to date in reviewing and commenting on our project. Getting to this point has been a collaborative process, and In-N-Out truly appreciates the significant time and effort put forth by all parties. As noted in the staff report, and due in great part to the recent addition of about an additional 30,000 square foot to the proposed development property, the project now comprises a dedicated drive-through queue of 30 cars, 51 parking spots, excellent internal circulation, and two driveways onto Via Pico Plaza. The project complies handily with every objective city code and design guideline metric, such as maximum FAR, minimum landscape area, and it exceeds both minimum quantity and minimum size of required trees and shrubs. In-N-Out is very proud of the final architectural design that is up for your decision here tonight, the diligence of planning staff in enforcing the city's Spanish colonial revival design guidelines, the assistance of architect Henry Lenny, from whom we receive valuable design guidance, and the input and constructive criticisms of the DRSC, all played a part in the evolution of this design. If approved as submitted by In-N-Out and as recommended by city planning staff, we believe this will be one of the most attractive, if not the most attractive, In-N-Out restaurant ever built. In-N-Out has reviewed the staff report, its findings, its strong approval recommendations, and the conditions of approval, and we fully support them with just a couple minor caveats. Condition of approval 3.18 tees up a choice for In-N-Out to make with respect to the existing median in Via Pico Plaza. Katie didn't go through that. We'd like to go on record to state that our preference is to shorten the existing median to allow for left turns from the westernmost driveway onto Via Pico. The condition is written that it's sort of the applicant's choice, but we thought it was important to state our preference for you guys as you make your decision tonight. We accept the condition that the length of shortening is to be specified by the city engineer and that this work is to be done at In-N-Out's expense. The staff report does support two items, which the DRSC had expressed concerns with. I apologize if I repeat anything Katie said.
Fading in and out.
Pardon?
Fading in and out, can't hear you.
Oh, okay. I'll speak up. The staff report does support two items, which the DRSC had expressed concerns with. I'd like to briefly address those in the hope that the Planning Commission will approve them as submitted. First is the standalone monument sign proposed near the corner of Pico and Via Pico Plaza. The staff report does an excellent job of detailing this item, and it makes well-reasoned and persuasive findings to support its approval. I don't have anything significant to offer in addition to the staff's facts and findings, other than the observation that the sign will benefit a business that I believe the city and its citizens would like to see succeed, and I hope that fact assists you with your decision tonight. Second is the red LED cove lighting. Again, the staff report does an excellent job detailing the background and facts relating to this item, as Katie did in her presentation. Points out that the city attorney, in response to an inquiry by the DRSC, made a finding that the lighting is not signage, and further, there is no city code, ordinance, or written policy prohibiting this type of lighting. As Katie mentioned, we've significantly reduced the amount of lighting from our initial design. Placed it in a recessed cove, and we've added dimming capability at the express request of the DRSC. And if you look at the night view renderings, you can see that the lighting is subtle and elegant. And as Katie mentioned, the author of the city's Spanish colonial revival design guidelines, architect Henry Lenny, expressed his support in the letter that Katie read from. In addition to the comment that Katie read, Mr. Lenny further states in his letter, quote, "I'm very much impressed with the result of the design and the collaborative effort of the entire team. I believe that this building, once completed, will contribute to the architectural fabric of the beauty of San Clemente," end quote. In-N-Out is hopeful that this element will be approved as recommended by in the staff report. Thank you again to city staff, to the DRSC for their hard work, and to you, commissioners. We respectfully ask for your approval of our project as submitted and as recommended by staff. I can be available for the duration of the hearing to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lockington. All right, I'll open this up for questions of staff or the applicant. Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I'd like to state I'm impressed with In-N-Out's... No state investment in this project, but two properties purchased, and I really appreciate that. In regards to the monument sign, I have no objection to the In-N-Out monument sign. I think...
So just as a reminder, Commissioner Brown, we're just in the Q&amp;A portion now.
Yeah, I just... Okay, never mind, I'll defer.
Okay. Commissioner Blackwell.
Yes, thanks, Jim. I have some questions for staff. So Katie, real quick, could you clarify for the record on the resolution? You referenced Point 11 that discusses the roof design. Could you elaborate a little on that?
Sure. Let me just pull that condition up. This is the commission's standard condition that relates to how we like to see the tile, what tile and how it's placed. It reads, "Two-piece clay tile roofing shall be used with booster tiles on the edges and ridges and random mortar packing. The mortar shall be packed on 100% of the tiles in the first two rows of tiles and along any rake and ridge line, and shall be packed on 25% of the tiles on the remaining field. Mortar packing shall serve as bird stops at the roof edges. The volume of mortar packed to achieve the appropriate thickness shall be equivalent to a 6-inch diameter sphere of mortar applied to each tile."
Okay, that's enough, Katie. Thank you very much. I just wanted to read that out loud, because that's a point that's been on the DIAS discussion point for a lot of years, and just happy to see that. I'm glad that this applicant was willing to do that. Wanted to ask you about the queuing options. There were three. There was a standard, there was an option one and option two. And you had mentioned on one of the queuing options that there was adequate space for additional queuing. Were you referring to option two?
So the comment was actually just in general, and there is space on the site for, you know, overflow queuing. These additional, the option one and option two that are in the presentation, were what the applicant drew up specifically in response to the Design Review Subcommittee's request for them to do so, just so we could get an idea of what sort of orderly queuing we could come up with should these really high drive-through demand times occur.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. So we had the three options. One was to encroach onto a neighboring property. We don't know if that neighboring property owner would be okay with it yet. The other option was to kind of curl it back, the additional queuing back onto the subject parcel. And then the standard option would just indicated the 30... I thought it was 32 stalls, vehicles by count, but 31, 32, but with no discussion about what happens beyond that. So those are the three options that were in the package. The option I'm considering, or that I'm interested in more on, is option one. I'm not interested in option two because it is on somebody else's property, so I'll take that out. But option one, want your take on how that impacts the parking stalls and the parking counts that were identified in parking discussion, parking study? That those stalls that are blocked in plan, it shows a kind of a prohibitive environment. In other words, those stalls that are blocked during those high-queuing times would be unavailable and effectively out of inventory. So how do we address that?
Well, as I noted in my presentation, they do have a 13-stall surplus. There are eight stalls, as you pointed out, that would be blocked by this queuing option, but still they have enough parking. Additionally, with a queue this long, this is really... And I think the applicant could speak even more to this, but this is really just so you can see that even if these sort of extenuating circumstances with the COVID precautions are still occurring, if and when this restaurant is built, that there are options. And if that's the case, if we're seeing this high demand in the drive-through, it stands to reason that it's because no one's allowed inside the restaurant, so there wouldn't be as many people parking. And again, they would still meet the code minimum, or, I'm sorry, the code minimum requirement, even without those eight blocked stalls.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And then the street trees. So there's a removal and replacement. So there's some olives and some melaleum trees that are going to be removed and replaced with a standard, smaller fruiting tree, the pineapple guava. And those aren't really street trees, they're on the private property, but they're going to serve visually as sort of a street tree, if you will. I mean, there's going to be a linear configuration design that would, that I think intends to replicate some sort of continuity, at least on this property. What was the thought process? I understand it went through design review, which I was not a part of, but what was the thought process of staff to interrupt the continuity that does exist on that street? And what I mean is, there are continuing, there's a progression of flat-sleeve paper bark, the melaleuca, that is being removed on the property, but it continues on neighboring properties all the way up, almost to the end of the street. There's a littering of other species of trees there, so... But I say it's fair that we consider it's continuity there in the streetscape. So what was the staff's thought on interrupting that in future plans to introduce some integrity along the streetscape, which is the intent generally when we are developing? Like, for example, with the Ole Hansen-inspired sidewalk debacle that we've been dealing with for years, when we try to, you know, get these red sidewalks in, it's kind of a years, when we try to, you know, get these red sidewalks in and it's kind of a patchwork at best. So what is our intent here, given this fantastic opportunity and the size of these two lots now, and the visual stretch and exposure at our gateway? What was staff's thought on that?
Sure. So it wasn't at the direction of staff that the trees were modified. I will point out that they do, they do have to remove several of those trees, just five or two of the fact that the driveways are relocated and because of the building placement. So while they could have potentially replaced those trees in kind, they chose not to. And the applicant may or may not be able to speak to that. I don't think they have their landscape architect on the call right now. That said, our landscape architect did review it and did not express that concern. I would assume because at this particular site, we don't have a standard or a requirement the way we do in a lot of other areas of the city where we have a specific tree species as well as specific spacing.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, thank you for that. Is, would you know offhand if that melaleuca is on a, on the list of prohibited trees, street trees?
I do not, unfortunately, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Okay, could you, could you look that up? Because that's a planning question. And if you, I mean, if you can't find it, that's fine, but I've got other questions, so maybe somebody could look it up. Gabriel, maybe you know? That'd be very helpful. I appreciate it. Okay, the, almost, couple more questions. The drive-through, let's see, the drive-through hours, is, are there differing hours in the drive-through than there, than there is for the walk-in?
I'll have to defer that question to the applicant. I don't remember what their letter said offhand.
Sure, Commissioner Blackwell. The operating hours of the restaurant, there's no bifurcation of indoor/outdoor operations. The store's either open or it's not. And our typical hours are 10:30 a.m. opening seven days a week. Sunday through Thursday, we're open until 1 a.m. and Friday and Saturday, we're open until 1:30 a.m. And the drive-through will be open at all times there.
Okay, so walk-in and drive-through, same hours?
Yes, Commissioner Blackwell.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And so Katie, there's a couple curb cuts or new curb cuts here and I'm thinking about the queuing. With the standard design, we are going to have a potential, you know, obviously we all know this is a wildly successful operation and Mr. Lockington, I'm sure you're aware of that, working for the company, your success is, you know, it's applaudable and it's very unique, but it does cause, you know, a lot of people to drive in and there's stacking that happens. And so I'm thinking about that relationship, walkability relationship. We are, you know, our general plan is, you know, multimodal design is a big deal here in the city and a lot of discussions about it, so I'm just thinking about walkability. So Katie, what, how is that going to be addressed when cars are, you know, stacking? And if, if it happens, you know, cars are driving up the apron, I've seen that at many, many In-N-Out restaurants where there's cars that are pulling in, they didn't quite make it, you know, they tried to make that quick turn and they got stuck. So now they're, you know, across the drive apron. I think this is a unique situation with this particular operator. It's uncommon with others, but it's very common with this one. How are we going to address that from a design perspective, walkability perspective?
Sure, yeah. So I think the way we did address it is by having them do a queuing analysis of other similar In-N-Out businesses. It's not a queuing analysis or a generic theoretical demand for any drive-through because we know that In-N-Out tends to have very long drive-through lines because they're very popular. And so, so from a design standpoint, the way we address that is that the professional analysis shows that any overstack would be sort of a, an extenuating circumstance, for example during a grand opening, maybe after a football game at the high school, or, you know, in times of COVID, if that were still occurring. You know, the applicant has shown a couple of options where they can stack even additional cars. So if we're concerned about, you know, 45 cars, for example, I guess I don't know what the upper limit of what we would be expecting from In-N-Out in terms of their site design would be. Staff felt what they submitted was sufficient. I will say that if you're looking at where people would be walking from, I know we always are planning down the line for what we want and not what is, but even down the line, most of your pedestrians will be approaching from Avenue to Pico, either through the, through the outdoor dining area or from Pico down via Pico Plaza where they don't need to cross any of these drive aisles.
Okay. Okay, thank you Katie. That is all the questions I have for now.
Commissioner Crandall.
Yes, this is for Katie, Mal and Jim. Just so I know, when we look at the master sign program or, excuse me, the sign program on the monument sign, what, I didn't see anything about an easement for the main monument sign for the center. It's my understanding that this property is no longer part of the center. And we have a assuming reciprocal parking agreement or access agreement probably, so they can use the other parking lot for their queuing. But am I wrong that this is creating a condition where we've got a monument sign that has an easement to be there, the big one? But In-N-Out has no right to be on it. So that monument sign is not contiguous on the property of the center. So how do we enforce maintenance, et cetera? Who does it? And Mal, what do we have to have from the applicant to show that we can maintain and who to go after since it's a piece of signage on, on their property and not the other owner's property?
Okay, so I'll take a stab at that. So just to make sure we're clear, yes, so when the, the center was developed, my understanding, and this center does have somewhat of a long-sorted history, but my understanding is that it was all developed as one center and this is how we got the pylon sign where it is. Subsequent to that, several of the parts, well, two of the parcels were sold off, these two, maybe, maybe a third as well. I am actually not sure that there is an easement for that pylon sign and I would defer to Mal on the legalities of that. So maybe Mal can speak to your specific legal questions a little better.
And before he jumps in, I'd also say that all of a sudden we've taken away a good 40, maybe 50% of street frontage that went into sizing that sign and now it's no longer part of the center. So we've talked about pole signs and the fact that they've been phased out over a period of time and so forth. Mal, can you jump in there and kind of clarify what the city has to do and know so we, in the future, we can deal with that sign?
Yeah, so if I understand that question correctly, the concern is that the planning commission may be approving or is at least looking at the request to approve improvements, whether it be signage or otherwise, that may not be on the applicant's property. And the concern is that if the applicant doesn't have a real property interest in, in the property that's at issue, then, then we're imposing conditions on them that they simply can't, can't fulfill. Is that the concern?
Yes and no. It's just that I know there's a loud voice within the city to reduce signage pollution. This is a big, huge sign. I'm talking about the biggest sign here on the corner that doesn't even apply to In-N-Out. But it's on In-N-Out's property and it is now, I'm assuming since they sold the property, legally non-conforming because it's grandfathered in. But for any maintenance, if they do more than 50% maintenance, it has to be brought in code.
That's correct.
So at some point, since it's now they've lost 50% of their frontage to justify the size of that sign, it's not only too big, it's not on the subject property. I think that needs to be brought out up to both In-N-Out and the center's owners that it's kind of a tough situation.
Okay, yeah, I understand the question. So, yeah, no, it's, it's a good question. It sounds, it sounds like from what Katie said, there is, as she said, a long consorted history with, with these properties. I think it makes sense for, for staff and myself to look, look into that history and see what it says about, about that sign. The pole signs have protections in state law that go above and beyond what, what, what our MUNI code requirements impose in terms of amortization, et cetera. So we'd have to take a look at, at the history of the property, the ownership interest and then pursue kind of what comes next. But I think the message is loud and clear and we can take a look at that as staff and maybe come back to the, the commission in writing about what the next steps would be.
Yeah, and I want to make sure that we inform both In-N-Out and the center of, that needs to be addressed.
Sure. Commissioners and Mal, can I just jump in real quick, please? In-N-Out is a groundlessy of this property from a landlord. We have no right to do anything to or with that existing non-conforming multi-tenant sign. We have no obligation to maintain it. We have no right to maintain it. We have no right to a panel on it. So it's, it's really just sitting there and we're accepting it as part of the property that we're taking delivery from our landlord on. We're asking the planning commission to approve a monument sign for our, for our marketing and recognition purposes with our customers. I think I understand the concerns and questions that you have, Commissioner Crandall, but that In-N-Out can't help with that. We don't have any rights or responsibilities or involvement with that sign at all.
So you're a long-term leasie of the property, not the owner of the property?
That's correct. We're a groundlessy, correct.
That may make a difference, but Mal, do you know what?
All right, I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify that. Not disagreeing or arguing at all with the concerns that you're expressing, just saying we're probably not heavily involved with respect to the existing non-conforming sign. Our interests are in trying to get an approval for our small monument sign.
Oh, I totally understand that. I just want to make sure that the, we aren't stepping over our bounds by approving it. And at this point, I'm pretty comfortable it can be solved. But thank you.
Commissioner Kozinski, questions?
Yes, I have a question for Katie. I understand that the LED lighting for the roof is not prohibited by the design regulations. Is that correct?
Not to my knowledge. I couldn't find any guideline.
So what guidelines do we have for building lighting under the Spanish Colonial Revival architecture?
Sure. So any lighting that is visible from, from the exterior is supposed to be in character with the architecture or, or not be visible. So if you have like a recessed light that is under an awning or, or something that people can't see, or in this instance, the LED strip is recessed within, so it's not, you can actually see the fixture, if you will. So that's the one, the, the design guideline specifically with regard to Spanish Colonial Revival that I can think of that pertains to lighting. There may be others, but that, that's the only one that I can think of at the moment.
To your knowledge though, does LED strip lighting fall within the Spanish Colonial Revival architecture?
Well, I'm not, I don't know that, but what I did rely on was Henry Lenny's word. And so certainly I'm not in a position, me personally, as staff, I'm not in a position to necessarily second guess that without more specific prohibitions in either our code or the design guidelines, but certainly it's the prerogative of the commission.
And have, have we ever approved LED strip lighting for any building lighting scenario that falls under the Spanish Colonial Revival architecture?
That I don't know.
And then this is a question for Mal. If we do approve LED strip lighting along the roof, would this set a precedent for all Spanish Colonial Revival designs as acceptable?
No, this would not be precedential. These types of decisions are one-off decisions. Certainly a future applicant could point to this and, and argue that the planning commission had approved this previously, so therefore essentially what's, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, but it is not legally precedential in any way.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
I'm going to jump in, in real quick, Jim. I want to clarify this because I am going to discuss this during discussion. But Katie, does not the urban design element of the general plan or gateways indicate that when looking at Spanish Colonial Revival identity, that we look at the Architecture, Landscaping, Signage, Lighting Streetscape? This is UD 2.02 and it is in the urban design elements and it's specifically unique for gateways.
Yeah.
That said, and the answer is yes, it does say that. Chris?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wood.
I'm going to talk about a sign and a lighting later, discuss you, but right now I have one question about the street trees. Katie, I need you to help me to make this finding and how can you make me, how can you help me to make this finding about the street trees? I'm looking at a West Pico corridor specific plan. The COP as well as the site plan permit ask us to make a finding that this project is in compliance with the West Pico corridor specific plan, one or other thing. So 303 is the landscape guidelines, dot one, landscape elements, dot E, street tree. It's a short paragraph, I'll read it to you. On local and collective streets, street trees should be provided at an average ratio of one tree per every 25 feet of frontage in order to visually soften the effect of buildings and hardscape as viewed from the street. Trees should be minimum 15-gallon size and should be planted within 10 feet of the sidewalk or curb when there is no sidewalk. Care must be exercised to avoid potential impacts to existing sewer, water, gas, utility infrastructure. to existing sewer, water, gas, utility infrastructure. Preferred species include... I will skip that. But the existing street is lined up by those manilucar trees. An applicant took them away. And as far as I can tell from the site plan or landscape plan, there are crisscross palm trees. Beyond that, there's only one tree. Especially in front of the hardscape and building, there are about 100 feet streets without trees. How can you help me to make this finding that this design meets this design guideline here? Last time in a design review meeting, I asked the applicant to move the building backwards to provide a space for street trees. The applicant simply said, at this moment, we cannot do that. There wasn't a good justification for not doing that. The site is large enough to accommodate a few feet. The site is overparked, so apparently it's big enough to make those adjustments. So can you explain that to them?
Commissioner Wu, if I can, it might be easier for staff to address your question if there's something specific that you can ask them as opposed to just how to make the finding? Is there a specific number or a specific guideline or something like that you have a question about?
Well, the question is that the report says this project meets all requirements, including specific plan. How do you reconcile the difference I just pointed out?
Sure. That's a really good point, Commissioner Wu. And while it does meet most of the criteria that you mentioned, including that they're larger than minimum 15 gallon and that they're within a certain distance from the right-of-way, you're right in that I missed that there is a minimum 25-foot spacing. And I just simply missed that. The city has a lot of very specific regulations. So my recommendation would be that we simply condition it, that it meet that requirement. This plan, the landscape plan specifically, will have to go back for a plan check to Pat Murphy. So any changes that they have to make due to any such condition would be reviewed by him again anyway.
Do you see any site constraints that prevent from doing, being done? Because right now, the building is really close to the back of the sidewalk. There may not be enough space to accommodate a tree, especially in front of the building.
So I mean, I didn't design the site for them, so I couldn't speak to all of the possible constraints. It is, I mean, as you pointed out, they're overparked. And so if they were to move the building back, they would have to shift everything else back. And while they can stand to lose a few parking spaces, they can't minimize, they can't make their drive aisles smaller because they have to meet the minimum width and so, and the minimum backup distance. And so I think it would require a wholesale redesign of the site. And I don't know that the applicant's prepared to do that at this stage of the game or even at the design review subcommittee level.
Can we ask the applicant if he's willing to make this adjustment?
Sure.
Sure, I'm happy to. I do appreciate your question and comment, Commissioner Wu, but the site is significantly constrained. And I'd like to sort of set the table for a overarching staff requirement from literally three years ago when we first started designing this project, that they focused on several general plan and specific plan and gateway requirements that this project, that the building be forward on the site as it's currently designed, that it provide pedestrian connectivity to the corner of Pico and Via Pico. And that's what we've done. What might seem simple to push the building back a few feet is not. The site is significantly constrained in terms of the circulation of the drive aisles that are behind the site, the required size of the biofiltration basin. So I don't, it may not even be a sense of we're not willing to do it. I just don't think we can do it without a significant redesign. And we are not prepared to do a significant redesign at this point.
And if I turn down...
The fact that there might be, you know, the need for a few additional street trees, I don't think that's an issue. But there are significantly more trees proposed in our plan. And many of them are placed exactly as design review subcommittee members requested in terms of shading, et cetera. There are significantly more trees on this site than the existing site. And we'd be happy to work with staff to make sure that we're complying with the tree spacing guidelines.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I'd like to just point out that lining A under that site plan permit says, "Post-development is permitted within the subject zone pursuant to the approval of the site plan permit and complies with all applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance and the West Pico Order Specific Plan, the goals and objectives of the general." So all applicable parts of the, is the key word here, I think, that I think we can, the staff proceeded with the applicant to design the site on. So to come back and look at the site, West Pico plan, three years later, and look for some tree requirement, I think that, I don't know if that was the applicable part of the plan that the staff intended.
So we're still in our questions area. But I have a question. This is for staff and possibly the applicant as well. I understand that the applicant doesn't have a right to any particular signage on the existing monument sign. But is there anything preventing the applicant from forming an agreement with the owners of the sign to put up signage there?
Well, I guess, I guess practicality. So I did actually speak with the property manager for Pico Plaza a couple of weeks ago. And we, you know, we were just discussing the project and a project on his site, and the sign came up. And he did say, you know, he's not opposed to having In-N-Out have a panel or two on the sign, except he would need to add those panels because when they're fully occupied, they don't have enough panels to include this sort of off-site business. And because it is non-conforming, the way we pointed out earlier, we wouldn't permit it to be modified in that way. Certainly, they can change out the panels, but we wouldn't permit them to say, add two more underneath the existing tenant panels. So that's sort of, but there's nothing concrete. And so if the, practically speaking, if In-N-Out wanted to come back and add this panel, it needs to be included in their master sign program. And as you know, master sign programs are approved by this commission. So I don't think that that's going to happen.
Okay, thank you. We'll cover that a little more in discussion given the observations that Bart made about the signage as well. Okay, Commissioner Blackwell? Did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I do. So Katie, you answered the question about the monument sign. And I understand the pressures on, you know, on staff to get these things through. But when we say we don't know if there's going to be an application or a proposal to go on the monument sign, it gives me some reservation. And I've got to pause a little bit because of all the other signage that's going on here. So thank you for reaching out to the other app, to the sign owner. That's a big deal. And I think it's going to play into our discussion later on. I have a question. I want to feather this over to Mal. Mal, should the commission save, condition this project so that there could be no signage on that, on that Pico Plaza? No In-N-Out signs on that Pico Plaza? Say we decide through our discussion, presentation, everything happens, and then our discussion decide that, you know, the current proposal and design is at the upper limit. We feel the threshold has been reached for signage. We just couldn't bear anymore. It just beat too much. And then they came back later and made a proposal to place their sign or their logo and city name up on the Pico Plaza. Could we condition at this point something on a different, on a different property? I mean, could we prohibit or condition this project so that they could not put their sign on the Pico Plaza monument?
Yeah, I've definitely heard your question. I'm thinking through that right now. We cannot, just kind of thinking out loud, you cannot condition an applicant on receiving the approval of a neighboring property owner. But I don't think there's any reason why we couldn't prohibit them, if you will, from asking to go on a neighboring property in terms of signage. So yeah, I don't think there's any problem with doing that, with proactively preventing that from happening in the future. So yeah, I think you could probably do that.
Okay, and it would be something to the effect of, we could work through this if there's interest by the commission for further discussion, but maybe something to the effect that no further signage would be allowed, basically.
Yes, something like that, yeah.
Okay, great. And then Mal, while I have you online, I'm so glad you're here because I know you're, you know, you're well versed in all things signage. And Reed versus Town of Gilbert, could you give us a quick, just a real quick summary on the point that was made by the Supreme Court that jurisdiction, my understanding that the city cannot impose content-based restrictions, content-based restrictions? How that relates to color and placement?
Yeah, it's a good question. So Reed versus Town of Gilbert, of course, yeah, dealt with content-based restrictions in the context of non-commercial signage. Now, of course, here we're dealing with commercial signage. But the Reed case, the holding, the principles apply across the board. When it comes to color, actually, we're not dealing with Reed versus Gilbert. We're dealing with an earlier case, I believe, also out of Arizona. It's a Blockbuster case, back from when Blockbuster Video was still around, where a city attempted to prevent Blockbuster Video from having their signage with their blue and yellow, I believe it was, color scheme. And the court in that instance held that the color scheme was as much a part of their signage as the Rip's stub was and the Blockbuster Video copy was. And so under that case, a city cannot, for example, here, we could not condition the approval on In-N-Out not having their yellow, and I believe it's red, signage, having silver signage, something like that. That would be a violation of their speech rights under the Blockbuster case.
Okay, thank you. So in other words, the applicant would have to agree to condition?
Yes, so we've seen that previously. I believe that with the Chick-fil-A project, the applicant voluntarily agreed to that. We also have at the outlets pursuant to a private agreement, not a condition of approval through a CUP. We have signers that I believe is silver and white as opposed to kind of the standard colors of the trademark signs. So yeah, it can be done, but only if the applicant volunteers to do it, and it cannot be conditioned.
Okay. And lastly, on this topic, Mal, are there special exceptions? Say if you're in a design corridor, a specific plan corridor, to designate a gateway, historic district, et cetera, are there any trumping factors that would help the argument? Should we, you know, feel that, hey, gosh, this is what we're doing in our gateways? It's part of our plan. It's what we're doing. And everybody's doing it, and it's just part of our streetscape, and this is what we want. What, at that point, anything?
Yeah, no, it's the good question. So there are cities that don't allow colored signs, right? Every sign looks the same. Let's say it's all some kind of metallic color. If you have that kind of a requirement in a code, if it's codified, if it's the law, then potentially you can do that. In San Clemente, certainly we don't have that in the code. I'm not aware of anything in any kind of design guidelines that would allow us to do that. What you cannot do, however, is require that trademarks signs not include the color. So some sign codes in jurisdictions that are very, very strict will require that all the copy look the same, right? It's the same font, the same color. And so you couldn't even have In-N-Out with the arrow, for example. It would have to be, you know, whatever copy that the code requires and whatever color they require. We don't have that requirement here in San Clemente, and so we can't impose that.
I appreciate that. So it'd simply have to be something the applicant would agree to during our discussion. Thank you, Mal.
That's correct.
Okay, lastly, Katie, two things. One, the median shortening in the report. There was two options, either shortening it or lengthening it. Both have merit. I can see how both options would serve, you know, pieces of the operation well. But what would be the, what would be the challenge with extending that median? Would that, would it be a bad thing to force the incoming folks, folks coming off of Pico onto the side street, this collector's street here, down into the cul-de-sac where there's a natural turnaround opportunity? Or would it be, in your opinion, more detrimental or more impactful to have a shortened median where people are gonna, should they see that the queuing is stacked, fully loaded, nowhere to go, they just want to get the heck out of Dodge and go home or go up the streets to Chick-fil-A or McDonald's? What would be the better, in your opinion, better way to go?
Well, I mean, in terms of a technical point of view, I would definitely defer to our engineering staff who have spent quite a bit of time reviewing this. So I don't really want to say what would be the better way to go. But I think if you do limit, if you extend the median and have a right-turn-only sign, you may end up with illegal U-turns. And not that that's our problem per se. And it's certainly enforceable. It just might be a byproduct of that choice.
Okay, so to be clear, if we extended the median, like a physical median, there'd be any recent U-turns?
Yes.
How would they do that if there's...
As opposed to shortening it.
Commissioner Blackwell, this is Gabriel, city planner. I also wanted to let you know that there is engineering staff available on the call if you have some questions about review of the circulation.
Well, I would, you know, thank you for that. Katie was not comfortable answering that. So maybe somebody from the engineering department could speak to that. It's important because it's a part of this. And we're trying to, you know, come up with a design that works for the applicant, patrons, and doesn't create an absolute nightmare down there. So we're looking for something that's the best-case scenario. That street was designed with a natural turnaround at the end. It was designed for that purpose. I'm wondering if we could bridge it, yeah.
Engineering is here. So in terms of which we would prefer, we're open to both designs. But I think from a circulation standpoint, I like the idea of keeping it short so that you've got full access at both driveways. I think once this becomes a little more familiar to the area, it'll, patterns will start to kind of solidify. And I think you might see one driveway being used more as an outbound and one more inbound, depending on times of day. But to limit a driveway initially before patterns were set, I think you can potentially run into some issues on that. So I think the condition was written in such a way that there was, there might be some uncertainty or option in that. And I, this is a traffic engineer, I like the shortened option.
Okay, well, that is very valuable. Thank you, Mr. Mangoix. That's important. Okay, and then finally, so Katie, I had sent some photos to you that arrived around, I don't know, three or so this afternoon. I think you had sent out the packets for review already. And what would be the best... And what would be the best time? I'd like to share that with the commission because it's about sign. And would it be now to show it, or would it be during our discussion?
I'm not sure that I'm the right person to answer that, but I imagine probably during the discussion, unless you have a question about any of it for myself.
Well, I only ask because the applicant could speak to it during this moment when the applicant, you know.
Commissioner Blackwell, is it a question about something?
It would, yes.
Did you just want to present some material?
No, it's a question. It's, In-N-Out had, I say, you know, had recently, not very recently, but recently built an establishment out in Westlake Village. And it was considered a sensitive, the visibility was considered important from the primary corridor there. And In-N-Out had agreed to do some backlit lighting, some, I don't know if it was bronze or black. But it really did, it was in a situation where, you know, according to Mal, was, you know, completely up to the applicant, and it worked out really well. I wanted to ask the applicant about it and their thoughts about deviating from the color scheme they're talking about here. Not suggesting that we change their logo or the color, but as we get into the discussion, there's some points that are still in the plan and discussion here that I've heard already with questions about the LED lighting, et cetera. So maybe this becomes a factor that gets negotiated here at the meeting. So.
Is there a question here?
The question is, would it be an appropriate time to bring up those photos to share with the commission?
So not unless there's a question about the photos themselves.
Well, I just told you.
We can bring them up during the meeting, but if you've got, is there, is it, do you have a question about it to the applicant that requires the photos?
I do, yeah. I do have a question.
Okay.
Okay.
Does staff have those available to display?
So I can't bring them up, but they are in the presentation folder. It's labeled with Commissioner Blackwell's name. So IT should be able to bring those up.
Okay, so my question is to, I had asked staff about this, just to be open, and that Reed versus Town of Gilbert was referenced as a point in time where we wouldn't be asking. That's valid. So my question to the applicant is, in this case, there was a concession made for whatever reason. I don't have the, you know, the case file here in front of me. I did not review it. I just know what I see. And what was, what were the, what was the rationale behind that? I didn't see any red LED lighting at all on this building at night. It was absent of that. The logo is in full color on the front of the interior areas of the, of the building, but not on the outside, those areas that were considered sensitive. Do you have any history on this, Jim?
Commissioner Blackwell, unfortunately, I don't. I've been with In-N-Out just a little over six years, and this store was opened shortly after I joined the company. And I don't, I don't know the history in any detail. I do know that the photo that's shown on the screen on the left side, that is halo lighting. That is the type of lighting that we're proposing on our wall signs as well as the monument. So it's in-mounted letters, halo or backlit. So it's going to look very similar to that. I think you will probably see a tiny bit of the proposed color on the signs that we're proposing for our San Clemente store. But I can say this, we, I don't believe, I don't believe this is something we offered the city of Westlake Village. I think this was a demand or dictate. And, you know, I don't know why we would entertain something like this here in San Clemente when we've worked with staff to come up with signage that is entirely compliant with city code. The area of the signs is substantially less than allowed by right. So I haven't heard a real question or a proposition yet from you or any of the other commissioners, but we really like the signage we're proposing and would be surprised to get pushback on anything other than perhaps the monument sign because that is something that's been in discussion in the prior DRSC meetings.
Commissioner Blackwell, if I can provide a little more background on this one, because I did speak with the project planner for In-N-Out at the Westlake Village Shopping Center. And the shopping center itself had an approved master sign program that required the uniform colors. Now, whether or not that was legal or when it happened or whatever, I don't know. But what the applicant, or I'm sorry, what the planner there at Westlake Village did say is that, yeah, as you mentioned, they did allow them to have their colors on the interior sign. And these photos that you've taken from, they're from the freeway. And we prohibit freeway-oriented signage in San Clemente. So the signs should only be primarily viewable from surface streets.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Katie. And I'm aware of that rule. I just, it was more of a question about the sensitivity of it, the exposure and the intent behind it. And, you know, what, I appreciated In-N-Out's response on that. So that concludes my questions. Staff, thank you.
Commissioner Kozinski, did I, did you have a question?
I did not, thank you.
Okay. I have a question for our traffic engineer. You mentioned that your preference was to allow the egress on both the driveways to allow a left-hand turn and to shorten the, shorten the center island to allow that. Does that take into account stacking that can occur in the street that it's, in the street itself that can cause a backup into the, I guess my question is, is, does that take into account potential backups that can occur in the no-stopping area of the parking lot due to that line, that left-hand turn lane or other lanes getting filled up?
You're talking about the? Maybe you're talking about the backup that could occur as you approach Pico at the signal?
Well, as you're, as I was wondering if you looked at the parking lot, the impact on the parking lot itself, for instance, as cars are, say, lined up to make that left-hand turn and that, I'm talking about the west driveway. As cars are lined up to make that left-hand turn, that they're, you know, and that you're proposing they be allowed to do. If there's stack-up on that lane, then cars are going to be waiting there in the driveway. And did you consider that they, or look at that they might be stacking up into that no-stopping zone in the, in the parking lot? That's right next to that driveway?
Yeah.
I'm not saying very clearly, I apologize, so.
No, I get what you're saying, the no-parking area as you exit the site. And yes, we, kind of our philosophy on looking at site plans is that you want more options rather than less, because like I was saying, is once patterns start to get established, you'll get drivers that go to certain driveways depending on times of the day. And we, and typically don't want to limit your options, you know, for ingress or degress. Now, one of the, I guess, tenets that we look at when we're dealing with a site plan is that if there's going to be stacking somewhere rather that it occur onsite rather than out into the public right-of-way. So in this case, you know, we're also making some off-site changes that will help get cars out from this driveway. It's not tied to In-N-Out. We're going to do it with a capital project upcoming. So what we're doing as a city is that let the approach to Avenue Pico, the middle lane is currently a left-in-and-through, for example, specifically, that's going to be turned to the left through right. So instead of having one single right turn lane, we'll have two, and that will affect the queues coming out, and that'll make it easier to come out of this driveway. But I think drivers will adjust. We've seen it, and I've seen it at other In-N-Out locations. I was part of the, one of the newer constructions in the city of Encinitas. So I'm pleased with the site plan. They did a lot of work to get to this point. With each iteration, they were increasing their drive-throughs and adjusting some of the things onsite. So I'm, I still stand by the preference to provide more access than less.
Okay. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I had an email conversation with our traffic engineer here, and he shared this striping because they're going to repave that whole area in and out of there after the years of delay. But the other thing, question I asked was, do we control that signal or is it under Caltrans control? And he stated to me that we control the signal exits that shopping center. I defer to the traffic engineer that we can alleviate a lot of things with our control of the signal. Master, you have any?
Okay. That's correct. We, the city controls that signal, so we can adjust timings up and down, adjust, you know, phasing if necessary in order to accommodate. And as I had mentioned, similar to Encinitas, we had a very similar setup where we had, we're coming off of I-5 to a signal right adjacent to I-5 controlling access to the lot, and we had control of that signal too. So it helps that we don't have to ask Caltrans to adjust signals for this particular location. I'm confident that we'll be able to adjust based on the demands at different times of the day.
Okay. Commissioner Ru, did you have another question?
Yes, my question is for our service, our engineer. Do you see any space, I see from the curb to the property, it's about eight feet or maybe seven feet. Is it possible to accommodate a tree grate within the right-of-way next to the property line?
So this is Zach Bonson, our development engineer. You're right, the right-of-way is, it looks like it varies between seven and seven and a half feet from the curb face. So once you take away six inches for the curb, you're kind of down now to six and a half feet. We are required to have at least a four-foot wide sidewalk out there, so it doesn't leave much room in the public right-of-way. In generally, these street tree requirements, at least lately for most of these types of developments, we've been asking, when there is this limited right-of-way, to have that street tree be on the private property. So to answer your question, yeah, there is pretty limited room there, especially if it's seven feet. You're getting down to two and a half feet, which doesn't leave you a lot of room really for the roots for a tree to grow healthy and large.
But the tree grate, it can be covered by a grate, right? So that's still walkable space. Is that doable?
It's preferable. I'd rather not see tree grates and have those be walked on just because they're more likely to be, create vertical deviations over time. It's a little bit more uniform and safer to have a straight sidewalk, obviously.
Now, given the existing dimension between the curb to the building facade, do you see enough space that you can put a tree grate across the property line? Is that something we can do?
Tree grate, as long as it doesn't interfere with the sidewalk. And you'll notice, kind of towards Pico, the sidewalk does have landscaping behind it, a little strip there. So instead of landscaping, if that area were to be a tree grate, there, you can do that in the right-of-way. We would like to clarify then who's going to be owner and maintain those things. So there's, there is a separate minor encroachment permit agreement that comes in, and it basically says that In-N-Out would be responsible for those tree grates since they're partially in the right.
Okay, so if we can get that solved, maintenance issue solved, you will be fine if that tree grate strata on the property line?
As long as it's not interfering with the sidewalk, I'd prefer it behind the sidewalk. And if a couple inches of it comes into the right-of-way, that'll be subject to the city engineer's approval through what's called a minor encroachment agreement or an administrative encroachment agreement.
Okay. Well, we have, let's say we have seven feet, we take our four feet, we're left with, let's say, two and a half feet. Not enough for tree grate, maybe we need a three feet by three, maybe we need a four by four. That means a part of that tree grate will be in the subject property and a part of it will be in the right-of-way. So that scenario, you talk about encroachment permit and a maintenance responsibility. Other than that, is there any other thing that you think would prevent that from happening?
We'd want to look at and talk to Pat Murphy about the types of trees and the roots on them. Obviously, I would want a root barrier no matter what, but certain types of trees are more likely to start popping sidewalks and stuff like that. Even though they're in a tree grate behind the sidewalk, I want to, I want to limit that distance. I want to maximize that distance, to be perfectly honest, as much as possible, because trees have the tendency to pop our sidewalks. And so over time, the more, the closer you get, the more likely there is to be future damage. And so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any more questions for staff or the applicant?
Just wanted to know, Jim, I have one for Katie. If we found out about that Flag Street paper bar, the melaleuca species, if that was on?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I could not find that while we were, while we were discussing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
If I can chime in, yes, if on the design review guideline, pre-approved a tree list for general use.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, Jim, this is Bart.
Yes.
One question, this is for Gabriel and Mal, just so we understand our responsibility here. We've got to treat every applicant equally regardless of who they are or what they are. If we find things that may or may not comply with a standard, we can condition that. And with an appeal to city council, they can override, or they can allow that irregularity to stay and approve the project, correct? Where we don't make the rules, we just have to apply them. They can.
That's correct.
They can make the rules and let it go any way they want.
Yes, we have to apply the standards that are in the code.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Very good.
Commissioner Crandall, one of the things that I want to point out is that in the specific plan, it does talk about design guidelines, and it also uses language such as should versus shall as well. So one of the examples that was brought up is landscaping, and so there's a lot of language about should. So there is some latitude that the plant commission does have when applying some aspects of the West, Pico corridor specific plan.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. I know we've got a number of emails that we received. So Gabriel, why don't you take us through those?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll read the first letter that we received. And it reads, Dear Meredith Scott, I recently learned that the city's design review subcommittee may have an issue with the red LED cove lighting on the proposed new In-N-Out building. As a resident of San Clemente, for the past 29 years, I would like to let the city know that my family of five does not believe that the red LED cove lighting would be a nuisance whatsoever, especially since the LED lighting could be dimmed if determined that the glare was excessive. In-N-Out has done a great job of keeping with, keeping the architecture in line with our Spanish village-by-the-sea architecture, and we look forward to welcoming In-N-Out to our community. Thank you. Yvonne Armstrong. Let me pull up the next letter. The next letter reads, to introduce myself, I have been a San Clemente resident for just over 25 years. Prior to retiring, I was an architectural consultant to various financial institutions, assisting their construction loan departments with their plant checks and field inspections. Prior to that, I was a chief building official for all of Mono County. I'd like to address two items to be under discussion at the meetings of September 16, 2020, namely the monument sign that In-N-Out would like to place at the corner of Pico and via Pico, and the contra- and the controversial red lighting. Regarding the monument sign, I don't think the city should object to a small, low to the ground attractive sign based on the objection that is causing sign pollution. You are penalizing a respective business on the basis that there is another sign close by that was approved by a previous planning commission that would probably not be approved today. My previous experience at monument sign was understood to be a given part of the project, and I never heard of one being rejected by the city or county involved. Please consider that the In-N-Out sign is under consideration for denial just because another sign got there first. Next, in regards to the LED lighting, I don't think that this should be an issue at all. If you are considering making them change to white lighting, you are asking them to put in a more glaring and much less attractive lighting. As I understand it, the In-N-Out development department has been over backwards to comply with your many requests concerning this lighting. They have moved the lighting inside a cove, put them on a dimmer switch, and cut back on the amount of LED lighting strips to appease prior objections. I would consider any further objections considering the lighting to be overly nitpicky. Thank you for your consideration regarding my comments, and thank you very much for allowing In-N-Out to come to San Clemente. It says, From Roy Bobin, San Clemente resident. Next. Next comment is, reads, Hi Scott, I would like to show support for the future In-N-Out burger. The look of the building fits well with the San Clemente vibe and will be an asset to the community. This is in reference to Plan Commission Item 8A, Pico Plaza In-N-Out. I would like to request this to be read aloud. Thank you, Kelly Burton, Construction Planning Services, CPS. A few more. This next one reads, Regarding the proposed In-N-Out Pico Plaza location, I am writing to lend my full support for the construction of this location. As a resident and taxpayer in the community, I have observed In-N-Out to be an exceptionally responsible operator within their chosen markets for decades. Their locations are tactfully located and situated within the existing infrastructure. Additionally, they are known to be highly responsible corporate citizens. I would greatly appreciate my remarks being shared with any interested parties as I lend my full support to the construction of the aforementioned location. Regards, Joel K. Cobell. This letter reads, To whom it may concern, I am writing in regards to the proposed In-N-Out location in San Clemente. I believe this In-N-Out location would be a great addition to the Pico Plaza, and therefore I lend my full support to the construction of the aforementioned location. Best regards, May Dean Francis. The next correspondence reads, Dear Ms. Scott, please read my comment aloud at today's hearing. I just heard that the city may have a problem with red LED cove lighting on the In-N-Out restaurant plans. I was born and raised in San Clemente and have seen many changes throughout, through the years. I feel that In-N-Out's plans adhere to the Spanish style of our city, and having LED lighting on the building would be fine with me. Thank you for your time, Lindsay Canulow.
I have a couple of more, Gabriel, did you want me to go ahead and read them?
You know what, I'm having trouble opening, add two more.
Yes, I have two more.
One is from Horryan, and I can't actually open it on my computer, if you could read that one. And there's one last one, Ortiz.
Yeah, I, I can read them, sure. This one says, My friend, and I reside at 3 Mary Kay, San Clemente. I am in favor of the proposed In-N-Out facility at 115 Via Pico Plaza, San Clemente. I believe the proposed facility will enhance and upgrade the area around Pico Plaza. The facility will also provide much-needed vitality and interest in the area that all businesses should benefit from. Sincerely, John Horryan. And the last one, I think, unless Gabriel has some others, it says, There's a proposed In-N-Out in San Clemente that the design review subcommittee may potentially have a couple issues with. They showed concern that a standalone monument sign near the existing shopping center may contribute to, to sign pollution at the intersection, and recommended that the red LED cove lighting on the building be removed. I do not feel the LED cove lighting to be removed and am requesting my statement be read aloud. Thank you, Christian Ortiz, resident of San Clemente. I read it the way it's written. I asked him for clarification and didn't hear back from him, in case commissioners are wondering what that one means.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. No more public comments on this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then I will close the public comment and I will open this up for discussion on the planning, for the planning commissioners. Commissioner Kozinski, your mute's off.
Oh, okay, thank you. I had, I just turned it off. I'm supportive of this project, I think it'd be a great addition to the city. The architecture mostly complies, I think, with the Spanish Revival architecture. And I'm full support. The only concern I have is that red LED lighting. And if we do allow the red LED lighting along the roof line, then that would, I believe, set some sort of precedent or standard that that would be an acceptable lighting, building lighting for the buildings here in San Clemente. So I would like to see that conditioned out. That's my only comment.
Commissioner Crandall?
Okay, I'll jump in. First off, I, I think the building has come a long, long ways. Actually, a pleasure working with Jim and his team at Design Review to get us to where it's the architecture that is expected in gateways within the city. So I am certainly leaning towards getting this project entitled tonight. So he has a project that is entitled and can be built. As far as the monument sign, the reason I brought up the questions I did to staff and all was, I'm hoping at some point the big sign can get moved back to the main building. I don't see that happening in our lifetime. So I'm really not opposed to the monument sign, I can, I can live with that. The red light along the, red horizontal light across the eve of the building, we all know that, and we won't fool ourselves, that it is part of their corporate identity, and that's why they're fighting so strongly, Burton, I totally understand that. And I'm not opposed to corporate identity on buildings within the gateways. However, if a, I'm going for the old guys here. If Howard Johnson's wanted to come in and use their red metal roof, which is their corporate identity, no, you can't have that in a Spanish colonial revival architectural area. And that goes for any other institution that has a corporate identity except for, here's a bad example, but Tapo Bell. Would we say you can't have arches, that's their corporate identity? No, of course you can, that's a Spanish colonial architectural detail. So I don't want it to be thought that I'm against corporate identity. I don't believe that that red line, Spanish colonial revival. We have conditioned numerous projects, a couple of gas stations, Arco down on El Camino Real, standard station across the street from this project. And said, okay, you can have a sign on your building, which is fine, that's allowed. But you cannot paint the entire perimeter of your roof over your pumps something other than a earth tone that meets Spanish colonial colors. You can't have a bright blue stripe, you can't have a red stripe. And even though Mal has said, well, approving this wouldn't set a precedence, I think it does. I can see those guys coming, oh, we'll put up a blue light along the eve, and we'll make that, wash that whole fascia and make it blue. Therefore, we've got our corporate color around the whole area. And if we look at this as a standalone building, all by itself, somewhere, could I live with a horizontal line like that? I would struggle with it, but let's say it got approved. But now, what's to keep the entire center from having a horizontal red light to draw attention to it around the entire project? And all of a sudden, we're trending towards a pollution of light and signage that's starting to look quite cheesy for a architectural, Spanish colonial revival area. So I, I would condition against the light on the grounds that it doesn't meet the design standards or the urban design section of the general plan, which allows us to control lighting. I would refer you to their night scape scene of the building, and if you look at it, wonderful lighting below the fascia, and then all of a sudden you've got that red line on it. So the building can be lighted really sensitive to the style of architecture. So I would certainly vote for this project with the caveat that we condition against the red light. And Mal, what, on those gas stations, we worked with you, I know, on them. And somehow it was fine to require earth tones on those fascias. Do you remember those projects?
Yeah, I generally, I generally do, I don't remember the specific details. But as applied here, right, there's, there's nothing wrong with the, with the commission not permitting the red lighting and working, working on some condition or, or language to that effect. I will note that when I said this wouldn't be presidential, I mean that in terms of it's not a legal precedent, right? It's not binding on the commission, right? So nobody could come back in the future and say, well, you're bound to this, right? It would certainly create a precedent in terms of people can lean on it and say, you've done it before, so you should do it for me. But it's not binding, but yeah, we could work through language.
Okay, very good. And I was very concerned about getting light pollution that we don't want on those buildings and so forth. And I want to know that In-N-Out realizes we want to apply our rules equally to everyone. And I don't think we can, at this level, take a position where, oh, we'll grant something that we shouldn't be granting as far as the planning commission's purview. But you would certainly have the opportunity, if we approve it today with conditions, that you can appeal those conditions up to city council level. They make the actual rules, we recommend things, but they make the rules and they can overturn that condition if they so choose. That's my comments.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, thank you, Jim. I just want to continue on with Commissioner Crandall's discussion on the LED lighting. Yeah, I'm sensitive to the, you know, the, the brand, certainly. And it's not uncommon to see that sort of lighting on, on the In-N-Out establishments. In this case, you know, I agree with, with, with Commissioner Crandall on the, on the type of lighting that's up there. You know, a better, a better look, I think, would be white, a toned down white, if anything at all. Because frankly, the red just doesn't match, you know, the backlit lighting that's going to, you know, be there with their logo. Their logo is going to be red unless we have discussion and change the color, it's going to be the yellow and red. But at night, as the exhibits in the package show, it's going to be pretty dark. And it's gonna, you know, it's gonna have the illusion of being, you know, darker, you know, like not red. And so what's the point of the red LED lighting? It wouldn't really tie into the logo. I think that's what the, you know, what you see at other restaurants, other In-N-Out restaurants, they've got all the red happening. And so there's a loss in continuity there. But yeah, if I was to pick one, to pick a lane, I would say no, no on that cove lighting. We've got enough going on as it is, and to know that, you know, we had a consulting architect from Santa Barbara review this after all the work we did on, on Starbucks, just on the opposite side of the freeway, and all of the discretion that we applied to that. Yeah, it was a lot of hard, hard work and, and concern, just like what this project's gone through. And I, I would want no less quality with this than we, than we really wanted with Starbucks, you know? And, and again, with Chick-fil-A. Those are three recent ones that we've had discussions on, and Chick-fil-A did, they've got red signs all over the place. They, they did black, you know, and they worked with us, they did the backlighting, and it really turned out nice, in my opinion, it's beautiful. So I think that adjustment to this would be a big improvement, removing that, that LED lighting up there. The monument signage, I'm, I'll just tell you outright, I'm very worried. There's a lot happening here. This is, again, to remind everybody, this is, this is truly a gateway position. It's freeway adjacent, so I think we're going to see high numbers here. It's right at an off-ramp, it's right by the high school, it's on a major corridor, it's In-N-Out, did I mention that? There's going to be a lot of people going to this place, and you know, I'll get to the stacking part of it in a minute. But the signage, it's going to be very visible where it's at. Do we need that small monument sign? With the two up on the building, I think it's overkill. It's just a great example of a time when, you know, it's just not necessary. You've got the giant Pico Plaza sign that we just found out, there could be, hey, guess what? We could be looking at a sign program later on with, guess who, on the sign? Unless we condition against that, which I highly encourage the commission to consider. If we're going with this current sign package, it's just going to be too much. I mean, it's really. And my, my position on signage is that this, next generation especially, they're not looking for signs. Their phone or car's going to take them right to it, they don't need it. But here we are, we're talking about the signs that are proposed. My position is that, you know, the design is fantastic. I, I think it's clear that a lot of work went into this. I remember when it first came through, before there was two parcels involved. It was okay then, I mean, but it's come so far, and I applaud the applicant for really making an effort here. It's going to be, and they already know this, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a winner. This, this brand is a winner, and it's going to be wildly popular regardless of the color of the building. So they know that. Our job is to make sure we protect the integrity of our streetscapes, and our visual experience is a good one, especially the gateway. So I, I believe getting to the, the queuing part, and I will touch on, at the end, Jim, I'll touch on landscape, and it'll be very, very soon. Sacrificing safety, the safety of our residents for hamburgers and fries. I mean, we would be derelict in our duties as a planning commission if we did not address a potential impact. I mean, we would be derelict in our duties as a planning commission if we did not address a potential impact to our rights away. I mean, derelict, with an underline and bold. Who are we fooling? I've, I surveyed a number of In-N-Outs, including the most recent one built in our area, Cendaro. And I've watched how successful that property is. It just doesn't stop. And it's great. Good for the applicant. It's great. It's amazing. This will go down in history books, honestly. Somebody's gonna write about this someday. Maybe it'll be me. It's an anomaly in planning and fantastic, so. But it doesn't change the fact that their success causes negative impacts. Again, it's our job to address, as much as that sounds like a negative. We're definitely all on the same page. We want to see this. I want to see this. I'm excited to have this in town. I like the building, regardless of what's gonna be in it. It's gonna look nice with some minor adjustments. So, the queuing piece of it, I want to reference, I want to tell the commission about Cendaro, or, or, Chef de Viejo, they were approved for 17 spots in their, in their queuing line on, on the restaurant property itself, their driveway. And they planned for overflow to run behind Gelson's. For those that aren't familiar, it's kind of along the ridge. And it is not uncommon to see, you know, 30-plus cars in that queuing line, especially at peak. Tonight, right before this meeting, there were 32 cars when I looked, when I drove by it. A few more, and they're, they're blocking and prohibiting access to the neighboring gas station use, which during peak hours, COVID or not, during COVID, they were overflowing onto Antonia. During non-COVID, it's not uncommon for them to be right in front of the drive aisles for the gas station. There's signage there, do not block, and it's just, they've got cones everywhere. It's a bit of a cluster. They've even prohibited access to workers there, and I think they don't know that they can't do that, but they've done it, and they're doing their best. And it works. To Commissioner Crandall's comments, during another discussion, we talked about how people use space, and we just kind of let them do it. It's gonna be natural, and, you know, and I see that here. People will find a way. But now's our, our opportunity to put in as much measure as we can to ensure that this is a good, a good design. And, and, but I do want to say that it is a good design. I mean, a lot of work has gone into it. I applaud the DRC staff, the applicant. Just the traffic piece is gonna be the part that I think is gonna be the big issue here. And some parts of the country, and I, and if necessary, I'd do some more research and find it. In other similar situations where there's fast food, situations where there's stacking like this, signage on the property that says aisle full. Do not, do not stop, you know, something like that could be helpful. Because if we're queuing on the property, and I think queuing off property is out of the question, in my opinion, at this point. Queuing on the property is the only other option, because queuing is gonna happen, whether it's 30 cars or 40. I'm assuming it's gonna be north of 30 cars, easily, but they've got that in the plan. I, I venture to say it could double that, considering the location. Again, the high school, right at the primary entrance to the city at our gateway, right at the off-ramp, I mean, you can't ask for a better location for, for an establishment like this. It's, it's gonna do well. And, so, if it never happens, then, then fine. If it, if it, if it does happen, which we've seen before, our parking calculations, so when staff mentioned overpark, yeah, it's overparked for our calculations, but we just talked about this recently. We're using space differently, and this is an anomaly. This would be the exception. This, this particular use would be the exception to our standards, where, no, it's not overparked, in my opinion. It's underparked. Because what's gonna happen is we're definitely gonna lose eight stalls. Hundred percent guarantee on that, if we're queuing onsite, if we go with option one. Because those eight stalls are blocked. So if we have a surplus per code, well, that's for a regular situation. This is in its own category. In-N-Out, they are in their own, totally different. There's a close second with, you know, like Chick-fil-A and maybe one or two others that are regional favorites or local favorites elsewhere, but these two, this one is the king, right here. And we can't apply the same standards. We just can't. We, we shouldn't. Because because I think we might regret it if we don't take extra steps here, extra measures, so. My thought would be that we consider some signage on the property that indicates that the lot is full. It's either, it's either gauged with, in the drive aisle, like Irvine Spectrum has this, and it's very reliable. There's measuring devices in the parking stalls, and you drive into a parking garage, it says, you know, 20 spaces left, same technology. So when there's vehicles in the drive aisle, when it's maxed at the 30 or 32, you could probably squeeze 32 in there, then the light, the thing would say full. Or there'd be somebody standing outside saying, hey, our lot is full, you're gonna have to keep driving. To expect folks to queue onto the property, and we're just giving it a few stalls and thinking that's gonna hit it, any overflow that close to Pico and that close to the freeway off-ramp is dangerous. Any. You've got the, you've got another major, semi-major retail center beyond it, so folks still need to go there. If there was nothing else around, I wouldn't be as concerned, but we have high frequency, high trips. There's, this is probably the area with the highest vehicle trips per day, right here. So, especially during school, when school gets back in session, this could be, this could be a problem. And I know engineering has looked at this, and I, this, our engineering team is amazing, and they're very knowledgeable, and I've yet to see them wrong. But in this case, it's up to us, because they can only apply, you know, the, the formulas that they've got. Unfortunately, one of the guys from our engineering team has experience in another city. I am familiar with that one as well. It's a little bit different characteristically. It is not like this. This is different. This is in a different kind of a location, so. I think we should seriously and carefully consider that piece of it. Whether there's an elongated median or a shortened median, it all plays into behavior. And we can only control with our own devices, and that is through regulation and physical barriers, so. You know, obstruction, you know, wayfinding, those are the things that we can do. And it doesn't impact the, the use. It, it makes it safer. And I think that, that's, that's important here. So again, you know, we, legal has weighed in and given us a vehicle to prohibit any further signage for In-N-Out. If we were to take this package and, and support it, that would help us with protecting against additional freeway signage and extra In-N-Out signage, when we already have an abundance of it. And as I said, I believe it's, it's it's too much with the little monument sign. The, the trees, the landscape plan, by the way, generally speaking, it's very well done. They've put some well-placed, proper materials in the plan. And we've even got some screening of the drive aisle with the eonimus there. It's a little lower, there's still visibility, but it's gonna block a lot of the queued cars there, which is great. To Commissioner Rulins' point earlier, you know, we, we, we don't want more parking. We don't want to look at more parking, we don't want more cars, so. If we're gonna have them, we have no choice. We can address it with mitigation, and that is what the landscaping is doing here, so it's gonna be very effective. The street area, not so much. The trees that are proposed, they're smaller, slower growing, for the most part, fruiting trees. They're non-ornamental as standards, in my opinion. Generally, when this tree is used for ornamental purposes, it, a multi-trunk is used. It's a very pretty multi-trunk. They're an evergreen. But they do produce a green fruit that's not very visible, and a pretty flower that's not super showy from a distance. So we're gonna have very slippery and messy fruit. But this is a fruiting salamana, like it's indicated in the, in the landscape plan. It doesn't say non-fruiting. It's gonna be a mess. I mean, that fruit, when it falls off, it's, it's slippery and at least stains on the concrete. That guava juice, it stains concrete, so. For that reason, I think it's a poor choice. And for the other reason that I touched on earlier, we have no continuity in streetscape here, okay? Again, another opportunity at Gateway to do this right. I'm not a fan of what we have there, the olives. I don't know who, who was thinking, you know, olive, multi-trunk olives on the other part of the property and the adjacent property. But in terms of linear configuration, we've got flax leaf paper bark. That would be the predominant tree on that, on that street there. We're removing them in the plan. We're not reintroducing new ones and protecting the roots and doing it so that they grow properly and they look good. And partially, you know, they tie into what's there already. We don't know what the future holds for those other properties, but at least we have maintained some integrity in the streetscape. If we did, you know, even a, a multi-trunk that's controlled, we can still not encroach in the parking. If they're left alone and unmaintained, a multi can get kind of wild and, and kind of get, take away space, encroaching the right-of-way inappropriately and into parking stalls. So I think, you know, a proper type of, of either standard, or maybe a, a two-trunk multi replacement, because those other melaleucas up the road are multis, we would have continuity in streetscape. It's not a prohibited, prohibited tree, as Commissioner Wu had kindly offered to the record. So it's a tree that we can, we can approve, and it would provide some integrity in that streetscape, so. Overall, I like this project. I, I think it's, I think it's gonna work out well. I've never been a real big fan of pushing buildings right up to the curb, but this is the only configuration that's gonna work for them. It's the only one, so. We have really no choice, and they've addressed that with a nice design. I do like the design, and I'm, I'm appreciative of the barrel tile with the random mortar. It's gonna be very nice. The two palm trees, that's a nice touch. Good to see that. You don't see that on every, every In-N-Out, but they've got it there. That works. So with, with those changes, I'm very supportive of this project. I would like to have more discussion with the commission on the signage issue. Interested to hear what the rest of the commission has to say on the LED. But the signage issue is something I think we should really consider, and the queuing.
Commissioner Will?
Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna keep it simple and straightforward, because much of that issue has been covered by, by my fellow commissioners. So, I wanna, I wanna support this project. I wanna approve this project tonight with two conditions. The first condition is that we change their red LED lights out. They can remove it, or they can change to warm white color, okay? So the condition two is that I'd like to add a condition underneath landscape plans. Before 4.5, that's quarter 4.4, application shall meet street tree requirement per West Pico Quarter Specific Plan Provision 303.1.1. And to, to be, the plan shall be approved by city landscape architect, city planner, and public works. But that's the two conditions. With that, I will support it.
Okay. I'm gonna chime in here for a couple of minutes. I, I think a lot's been said about the red light, so I'm, I'm not going to belabor that. I also have concerns about it. I'm afraid that we'll kind of start to see a lot of requests for, these aren't neon lights, but for, to kind of have a similar effect, and we may have more desire from people to do that sort of a thing with in architectural overlay areas, and it'd become problematic, and I, I don't think it's really reflective of, of what's going on in the district, so. I'm not in favor of that either. I do have, still have some concerns about the traffic, but our traffic engineers feel good about that left-hand turn. I'm afraid there's gonna get some jam up in the parking lot. You know, but I, you know, I prefer to trust the engineers, even when I, when I'm a little worried about it. They have looked into it. One, actually, I think maybe two possible recommendations we have is, and we've done this with other types of projects, is that we do a review in six months and take a look at the traffic flow and take a look at how things are going in there. We tend to have done that with, I think, establishments that are serving hard alcohol for the first time or something like that. But we have some concerns about this corner. We've got some concerns about the traffic flow. So that may be a condition of approval, an additional condition we want, where we have staff, you know, go and take a look after six months, do a quick evaluation, and report back to the planning commission. Another thing we may want to do, and I don't think that this is a condition, but we may want to encourage, you know, perhaps even pass on to the city council, and ask them to have code enforcement proactively visit during their first month or two. Because as we've seen, for instance, with Chick-fil-A, which is a similar, very popular kind of place, they had, you know, enormous response and business, and good for them. But they also had a lot of extra parking lot to go in. I regularly see, even after things have died down, I regularly see, you know, 30 cars in Chick-fil-A, and I expect no less from, from from In-N-Out. So we may want code enforcement there to observe what they're doing, help where they can, and make sure that things are flowing well. Like I said, I don't think a condition of approval, but perhaps a recommendation to city council, that they ask, that they direct code enforcement to make regular visits there their first couple of months, that they're open to make sure things are flowing right and address any potential issues. Hopefully proactively, and In-N-Out has, you know, obviously been good about that, so. You know, I don't know if there's been any issues. I just see it as a way of us all working together as things settle down there and the routine gets in. Regarding the monument sign, I, I always think, I think sometimes it's good to remember that we have a, in our conditions of approval, when we talk about monument signs, it says, if a freestanding sign is included, the design scale or location of the building dictates the use of a freestanding sign. And that's, that's always been a strong word to me, that, that's dictated. We have buildings sometimes that are set 100 yards back from the street. This one isn't. It's closer to the street. A monument sign they may feel gives them some added benefit, but I don't see, in terms of, you know, where you can see the signage now, you'll be able to see it from a number of different positions on Pico, I don't see where that dictates the need for an additional, you know, for a monument sign to be there. In addition, of course, we've got, we've already got that very big monument sign we all know about. I do think that, so having two monument signs just starts to look strange and awkward, and it's not really appropriate for what we want in that district. So I think that's, that's a whole nother reason, actually a whole nother finding that is hard to make to allow that. I, I would say Bart brought up some very interesting points about the existing signage, so thank you. I think it's a really, you know, just a really senior observation. By that, I mean senior planning commissioner type of observation with the signage. No comment about your age, so. But it's, you know, the, the comment about the fact that they would have to add more signs, get permission to add a couple of placards to include In-N-Out, that strikes me as a little strange, because as Bart pointed out, that large monument sign was put there with the frontage that's currently on In-N-Out calculated in as part of what was necessary for that size of the sign. So, I understand that they're not, that they may not have room for that sign by right, but in terms of having enough room for In-N-Out, well, there used to be two businesses there where that frontage was covered. Now there's just one in that same frontage, but went into the signage space calculation for that large sign. So, you know, it's a terrible behemoth, but it, but it has the advantage of already existing, and it's not gonna go away. So I, you know, if they're part of the signage for that, given that this land was originally part of that, might still be, I don't know. They're leasing from it. I don't know who the actual owner is. I think that still needs to be resolved. But if they put signage up there, I don't necessarily think that would be inappropriate to have it on that. And it, and, and I think that that's available to them in some way, shape, or form. They can enter negotiations, they can have a discussion about it. If they want to amend their sign program to ask for more area for In-N-Out, that's something that can be done. So there is a route for In-N-Out potentially to get monument signage without us approving yet another monument sign there. So if they want to pursue that route, that is, of course, their right, and their, you know, their interest to do. But I don't think having a second monument sign there is something that we can, that we can make them findings for, in, in my opinion. So I would like to see a condition actually to, to, to not allow So I would like to see a condition actually to, to, to not allow the monument sign there. That would be my preference. Um, I'm going to see if there was anything else. I think, I think that that was it for me. Bart, you were kind of leaning in. Did you have something that you wanted to add? No? Okay, sorry. So is, would there be any objection? It sounds like there's other people have some concern about that. Any objection to adding as a condition of approval, not including a monument sign in their sign program?
Yeah, I, this is the Commissioner Wu. I recommend you do some straw vote on each, each item.
Uh, we can do that. Before we do that, Commissioner Brown, I think wants to, has something to say.
Oh yeah, I, I support the project. I can make most of the findings. I kind of agree with the, the LED lighting. Monument sign, to me, their sign package is actually fairly well balanced. What's, every baby in the neighborhood is this grandfathered monument sign that belongs at the shopping center that needs to be updated and possibly scaled, you know, they can still have the square footage, but these are two feet by two foot, the puddings and stuff like that. I think the other way to go is get this monument sign under control. Of course, they have rights and that would be a long, you know, a long jury, I guess. I don't know how to mouth on that, but I'm not particularly, I, I think the signage plan that In-N-Out brought in is fairly balanced for their business. And this monument sign that's been there for years is the problem. And I don't think penalizing In-N-Out is the solution. By all means, I can make the findings. It's very well done. They've worked hard with staff. You know, they leased two buildings and made a huge economic commitment to the city's state committee. And I think we need to take, keep that large picture in mind. And I think initial, when it opens, it's going to be a traffic jam, just like they have a Chick-fil-A right now and then over time it's going to die down. And that just comes with newness in our little town down here and we'll have to work through it. So I'm going to be supportive of the project. I can make the findings.
Okay. Well, let me do some straw votes here, just to try to make this easy. I'm just going to ask for objections, see if anyone pipes up with objections for these. That might be the quickest way to find out people's feelings about these. Are there any objections to adding a condition of approval to remove the red LED? Okay. Uh, I think we were requested by staff to remove item 4.3. It was put there accidentally. I assume there's no objections to removing condition of approval 4.3? Okay. Uh, is there any objections to adding a condition to have the city landscaper and city manager or city planner approve the landscape plans?
Uh, Jim, for clarification, would that include the removal of the pineapple guava and addition of the paper bark?
I don't know. That's all, that's all I got from Commissioner Wu's comment. Commissioner Wu, was that, was, did I miss something there?
Well, I like it to be more specific and that is whether you remove the existing tree or not, whether the applicant choose to move the building backwards to provide a space for more street trees.
So, so can you?
Or work with?
Can you tell us exactly the text that you would want the condition of approval?
The text would be, actor can shall meet street tree requirements per West Pico corridor specific plan provision 303.1.1. The plan shall be approved by city landscape architect, city planner, and Public Works.
I got to plug in my phone. Is there any objection to that condition of approval being added?
Well, can we add the tree type to that? That'd be a good place to go. Uh, we can do a separate condition. I wanted to, to address that you were doing spacing on a tree, right? If everybody's on board with that, but there should be some consistency with the tree type as well. So would it be appropriate to add the tree type here in this?
Why don't we have a separate condition? If you, if you, because I don't think Commissioner Wu's condition included a specific tree type. So if you have specific tree types you want to add or remove, why don't you have, why don't you propose that as a separate condition?
Okay, I can do that, but the thing, it would just be simply, you know, that, that the pineapple guavas would be replaced with the flaxseed paper bark, but then it changes in character for doing different spacing and placement of that tree.
I, I, well, I just worry about, a little bit about design from the dais. I know you've got a concern about that particular tree, but there's a whole landscape plan that is put together in the way that it is. Do we want to be? Jim? I know sometimes we do that, but I, I don't really know about the species, but yeah, Bart.
I, I, I don't feel comfortable dictating which tree the applicant uses, but I, I would accept the condition of approval that I think Jen said, but then to be reviewed by city landscape architect and then on the side, give your recommend, Blackwell could give his recommendation to staff to present that to the city landscape architect as one of the options.
That would be fine. The character, um, the character of that particular tree that's being replay, or repositioned and re-spaced, it's a small fruit tree.
Okay. So let's, so we can just, I think we've made that clear to staff that we'd like them to look at that and consider that as they review the landscape plan. So is staff good with that?
Yes, that's understood.
Okay, very good. To removing the monument sign. Okay. So those are the one?
Sorry, was that a straw vote on removing the monument sign was the last thing you just?
That's what I'm calling on right now. Is there any objection to removing the monument sign?
I don't support removing it.
Okay, so you object to it? Anyone else?
I'm neutral on it. I don't object to remove it.
Okay. So it sounds, it sounds like the majority is okay with it. So that is?
Jim?
Yes, sorry.
Um, I think we may be three-three here.
Okay.
I'm, I'm kind of, I'm very soft on this issue, whether they get it or not. But I'm going to anticipate, I'm, I'm going to say, let's omit it. I'll vote for omit it because I'm of the opinion the applicant's going to take this to council and get the other items reviewed and that can be reviewed at the same time.
Okay. It sounds like we have a majority that are, that are okay to different varying degrees with, with removing that one. So we're removing the monument sign, removing the red LED, removing condition of approval 4.3 and, excuse me, a condition to remove the LED, red LED from the application, a condition to remove the monument sign from the application, removing condition of approval 4.3 and adding Commissioner Wu's condition regarding the landscaping plan.
Regarding the street tree.
Yes, you, you, yeah, yeah, you read off that text. Katie, do you have text for conditions that will disallow the red LED and the monument sign?
Yes. What I had drawn up during your discussion was simply to add to condition 4.17. And, and let me just pull that one up. Oh, sorry, to add condition 4.17. And it would read, prior to issuance of building permits, the red LED cove lighting and the monument sign shall be removed from all plans, including the master sign program.
Okay.
And Jim, the one you had recommended, having it reviewed in six months or over the first six months.
Yeah, I forgot about that one. Thank you.
I would, I would recommend that be done by engineering rather than code enforcement.
I just wanted, if I may, to draw your attention to an operational condition of approval that Public Works already put in. I don't know if it meets your requirements, but if you look at 7.17, um, I, I don't know if that's going to meet your, um, or if that's going to address your concerns, but, sir, it could.
Did you read that while we're looking for it?
Sure. In the event that vehicle stacking or other issues cause circulation and/or crowding onto the streets, then the business owner will be required to meet with city staff and propose and implement solutions, including, but not limited to, increasing the number of staff outside, helping organize stacking, double stacking vehicles on site, dedicating drive approaches for entrance and exits, et cetera. As part of this condition, there shall be no staff staging or activities within the street and sidewalk right of way.
You know, I think, I think I'm okay with that because it, it does, I'm most worried about the public street, so.
Uh, Jim, uh, this is for Commissioner Blackwell. Would you want to put on and consider additional signage as necessary to include that in there, include additional signage?
I, I think that's an excellent idea. It would be an easy step to, to take, an easy element to put in and, and it, and it can help, you know, it helps folks get the idea, get, get the hint. It's full, you know? Turn around, go up the street, you know, go park somewhere else and walk over, you know, something, just to encourage them not to stay in the right of way if their car wait.
So, so in that, so then the text would read in that portion of the sentence as it's kind of going through, uh, let's see. In solutions including but not limited to, and then there's a number of things that are listed, and then before et cetera say additional directional signage.
Yeah, so if it's way sign, well, thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Crandall, because, I mean, how is the sign going to, it's going to have to be specific. It's, you know, no parking, no parking in the street when, you know, when, uh, drive aisle is, when aisle is full, something. I mean, it can be, like I said before, I wouldn't consider it extreme anymore. Maybe a few years ago, it'd be a very costly thing to add, asking how to do, but it's new construction. They put sensors in the drive aisle that will tell in the sign that, the sign that works with it, it says it's full, right?
Is, is the verbiage I proposed sufficient for you or do you have other verbiage you'd prefer?
Could you read it again?
Before the word et cetera, adding the words additional directional signage. It's just one of the, one of the options listed that city staff might have them do.
So we'll leave it at the discretion of the engineering department?
Yeah, it's, it's just a list of things that says they could do any of these plus other stuff, right? It gives a lot of discretion to them, right?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
As long as it gets the point across.
All right. And Katie, do you want to read the text that you have for those two items, the red LED and the monument? Oh no, you already did, you already read that.
Yes.
Um, all right, so those are all the pieces, parts. Does anyone want to give the motion a try? You going to make me do it? All right. Um, all right, Katie, I'm sure I'm going to need some of your help here. Um, let's see. Cowards.
Well, you were writing everything down, Jim, so.
I was scribbling, so. All right. Um, I'll move that we adopt resolution number PC 20-022, a resolution of the planning commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving commission use permit 19-346, site plan permit 19-347, architectural permit 19-348, discretionary sign permit 19-349. Pico Plaza In-N-Out, a request to construct and operate a one-story, 3,882 square foot fast food restaurant with a drive-through and amplified sound outdoor dining area and master sign program with venue boards on a 76,509 square foot site at 115 via Pico Plaza with the following changes to the conditions. Condition 4.3 is removed. Um, condition four point, uh, we add condition 4.17 that reads, as Katie will read now.
Prior to issuance of building permits, the red LED cove lighting and monument sign shall be removed from all plans, including the master sign program.
And a new condition of approval, um, I don't have the exact text, so do you want to read the text that you read us, Commissioner Wu?
Uh, yes.
Oh, you have it, Katie?
I have it. So let me repeat it back to make sure I have it correct. And I would suggest simply amending condition 4.5, which already addresses the landscape plans.
Okay.
So adding to the end of condition 4.5, the applicant shall meet street tree requirements in the West Pico corridor specific plan section 303.1E. The plans shall be approved by the city's landscape architect, the city engineer, and the city planner. Is that correct, Commissioner Wu?
That's good.
Okay.
And also modifying condition 7.17 to add the text between the word exits and et cetera, adding the text additional directional signage. And that's the motion.
Second.
Motion by Ruland, second by Crandall. Call the roll. Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Ruland votes aye, passes unanimously. So congratulations, Mr. Lockington, and good luck.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate your time and the thoughtful application of your civic duties.
Thank you. Our next item, 8B, uh, is to discuss zoning amendment 20-035. Jennifer Savage is our planner, who's going to be taking us through this. We all have reviewed this in a couple of study sessions already and the staff has kindly listed our changes and, or our requests and what they changed based on our request. So I thought that a good way to go through this might be to have Jennifer start by giving us an overview of however long and then we can go through the six sections, one by one. We won't do a page turn, we'll just call on that section. And in that section, the first thing we'll do is have Jennifer go over the modifications she made to the originals based on our input at the study session. And then we'll see if there's any further discussion. Does that work for you, Jennifer?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair and, good evening, Chair and commissioners. A presentation will be up shortly and we are reviewing the zoning amendment that we initiated earlier this year. And I'll go over a little bit of background before we start our questions and discussion. So first, the, the purpose of this item before you was to modify sections of the code and or add regulations to the code. That would be uncomplicated or less complex than say a, a larger effort. And so something to keep in mind when you're considering your recommendation is that purpose and that any complicated items might be considered at a future date. We did hold two study sessions, one in July and one in August. Those two study sessions then review three subject areas each. And I'm going to back up to the first bullet point, the purpose. When we initiated these zoning amendments, there were a large number of amendments that we had collected. And in order to provide a platform that would allow us to consolidate these amendments into a more digestible format, we sort of categorized all of these amendments into 13 subject areas. And so the study sessions in July and August reviewed three subject areas each. And at each study session, they were different subject areas. For each of those subject areas, there was one attachment provided for each of those study session memos. And this evening, we have updated those attachments. And where are the updates? There's two places that you'll find updates. First is the update that you'll see in the beginning of that you'll see in the beginning of each attachment, and that's the table that identifies the comments or questions that the commission had, as well as staff responses and where the sections might have been amended if applicable. Then the second area that you'll see updates in the attachments are the red line areas. So towards the end of each attachment for the subject area, you'll actually see the red line color or strike through to indicate the changes, and what you'll see is that the original proposal is in red, and any changes were now in blue. And then the last bit of background I wanted to provide is the scope of these amendments. I mentioned earlier that when we initiated these, we categorized them into 13 subject areas, and due to a number of factors, this evening, we are moving forward with six of those subject areas. Next slide, please. So what areas are we moving forward with? The subject areas that we are moving forward with this evening are the six that you see on the slide. And before I move on, I will go ahead and pause here and allow Jim to go through, and I'm sorry, allow the chair to go through each of the subject areas.
Okay, well, what I wanted to do was, we'll start with attachment two, which is the first of the subject areas, and Jennifer, maybe you could, I was hoping you could just address what you, how you modified the ordinance based on our recommendations, and then after that, I'll ask people for that area if they've got any other questions or comments.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So the first two comments were in relation to assuring that our definitions align with the California Business, sorry, California Building Code. So for the first one, for structures and buildings, we did review the California Building Code, and we've modified our proposed definition for buildings to align with the CVC to the degree that it identifies that the buildings are built for sheltering or supporting use or occupancy. And then from a structure standpoint, you have, the CVC definition is a structure, a structure is that which is built or constructed, and so there's a, there's not much that we can do to modify our condition, our definition. And to be clear, the need for us to define building and structure differently comes from buildings, buildings and structures having different setbacks. Their fences, which would be a structure, would have different setbacks than those of, say, a single-family dwelling. Then from an attached perspective, neither the California Business Building Code nor the Building Division itself has a specific definition or any definition for attached, and the Planning Division is proposing a slight modification to what you saw before in terms of the definition for attached buildings, and that noted in your attachment, and we are adding specification that a building is attached when it has adjoining floor area. Next slide, please. Then the next question or comment was the prohibition of two-story accessory buildings at the zero lot line. And staff did want to first note that the existing code, as it exists today, already requires a conditional use permit in order to exceed 15 feet in height. And then we also wanted to note that the Building Division doesn't prohibit accessory buildings constructed adjacent to each other on separate lots. And something to note in regards to this is that this really enables, say, detached garages on neighboring properties to be built close to each other. There is, of course, certain building and safety standards that they would have to comply with, but there's no prohibition against those structures being constructed adjacent to each other. And then the third note is that the scope of this particular proposed modification is to limit the number of accessory structures on one property, and so what we've done is we've modified that limit to relate to lot size. So detached or accessory structure, sorry, accessory structures would be limited to one in the case of lots that are less than 6,000 per feet, and they would be limited to two for lots greater than 6,000 per feet, and just to be clear that's for accessory buildings, not structures. Next slide, please. This next comment is in regard to an interpretation that was made several years ago in relation to special residential requirements, specifically the setbacks for garages. And staff did some additional research and found that the special provisions for setbacks were approved through the original development. They were approved to maintain the character of these neighborhoods in the original development many years ago, and this is a way to codify those particular setbacks so that the applicants and staff would have an easier time identifying what those setback exceptions are and applying them to any project that came through. And next slide, please. Leave that with the last one, yes, so that's the end of accessory structures and buildings.
Okay, thank you, perfect. At this point, it was my plan to have people, see if anyone had any questions or comments on that section before we move on, but I made a mistake and didn't open up the public hearing. So I'm going to take a step back and open up the public hearing. I know we've got one comment from the public, as far as I know. So I will open the public hearing, and Gabriel, could you read any letters that we received from the public on this item? Is Gabriel there?
Yes, sorry about that, I'm pulling it up right now.
Yeah, I know, I kind of tricked you.
Sorry about that. So we did get this comment, and the comment letter reads, "Plant Commissioner, staff has done a great job updating our municipal code. Two areas are, two areas are of particular interest to me, historical and residential. As president of the Historical Society, I'm keenly aware of how important the municipal code is in protecting our historic resources. Every proposed addition, deletion, and modification will enhance that effort. Unprotected resources will now have some. Marginally protected resources will now have more. A particular mention is the Historic Preservation Incentive section, which will tighten up the administration of the Historic Property Preservation Agreement Program. This will ensure that some of the tax savings go back into maintaining the resource. Also, the section on standards of designated resources opens the door to considering mid-century buildings. This is so necessary because we are really starting to lose these. Attachment six, residential, is an area of concern. Accessory dwelling units, ADUs, have the potential to drastically change our neighborhoods. Once these catch on, it will be just like the nightmares over living homes and vacation rentals. Absentee owners will be buying up single-family homes and converting them into triplexes. Four plexes will become six plexes. In addition to increasing our population density, we are not allowed to require onsite parking for these new neighbors. I realize we are probably powerless to fight this density onslaught, but we should not encourage it. We should oppose it in any way the law allows. Maybe if street parking is made less available, there will be a disincentive to densify, densifying, but then the state legislature would probably outlaw red curbing. Thank you, Larry Culbertson. That's the end of the comments.
Okay, there are no more comments, and I will close the public hearing, return to our regularly scheduled program. So we heard staff's responses to our input from the study session on that first item, so I wanted to see if anyone had any discussion or questions or anything like that for the accessory structures section. Okay, great, then let's move on to section attachment three, definitions. Jennifer, go right ahead.
Thank you. So these first two comments are both items that we've removed the language. The first one is in regard to the definition for alley, and the Plant Commission brought up some concerns that the proposed definition may conflict with existing development for a number of reasons, and so we've removed the language. The second one is in regards to roof elements, and that the commission brought up concerns that it didn't account for buildings with different plate lines, no plate lines, or a lack of ridges, and correctly identified the need to consult with the Building Division as well as the Architectural Guild. And so this particular scope of work will require additional effort and time, especially in relation to coordination with other agencies or divisions, and so we've removed that language. Next slide, please. The next question was in regards to, let's see, I'm sorry, I don't have this highlighted. One moment, please. So this was in regard to the chimney height, and the Planting Commission had requested that we review the chimney height definition with the Building Division, and we did so, and they had no issues with our proposed chimney height definition. We did move the explanation that chimney height is not counted in the measurement of height of a building as suggested by the Planting Commission, we moved that to a section earlier outside of the definition section. And then in relation to the proposed hedge definition, the Planting Commission provided very specific language for that definition. We considered that language and completed further consultation with our attorney, and based on that consideration and consultation, we did modify the language for the hedge definition. More specifically, we were identifying that this definition is used in relation to the height and setback requirements for fences, walls, and hedges, and that particular section identifies the intent is to avoid impacts to traffic visibility. Next slide, please. The next was suggestions for modifying the cultural facilities definition, and so we did so in two ways. One, we did add libraries to that definition as an example, and then we also further defined the type of activities that would be allowed in relation to cultural facilities to that of displaying and preserving, versus the wide number of types of activities we had proposed originally. The next one was in regard to the inland canyon definition, and it is quite wrong. There's a number of different scenarios that the definition describes. Staff does want to note that the definition is consistent with our existing coastal canyon definition. It also has several scenarios within that one definition. And then consistent with that existing coastal definition, we've added an image for the inland canyon definition to give applicants a little bit of a visual for inland canyon. Next slide, please. The next one is in regards to taproom and microbrewery definition, and there were a number of comments that the Planting Commission provided, and staff went back and did some additional analysis, and we are proposing modifications to both the definitions for microbrewery and taproom, as well as where they are placed in use tables, and then requiring a CUP for both those uses, as well as adding bar to the heading in the parking requirement section, so it's clear that microbreweries and taprooms are not necessarily just a restaurant, but may also be considered a bar. And it looks like there's a repeat there, so go ahead and ask for the next page, please. And then the next one is not a question or comment from the Planting Commission, but rather it was additional clarification from our attorney. This is just to provide additional clarification on the senior housing definition proposal that we have in relation to the types of persons that can reside in senior housing. And that's our last one, so I'll go ahead and stop here for any questions.
Any questions or comments?
I have some comments on the restaurants and bars definition, as I stated before. I do not agree to put taproom, microbrewery, cocktail lounge, and bars underneath the definition of restaurants. I think we should have two distinctive terms. One is a restaurant for food service, another one is a bar for alcoholic beverages.
Is that table in this section? This is the definition section, so.
Yes, and that is in attachment three, and the change that he's referring to is in the definition section, and it is on page 121. And 121 starts with the bar or cocktail lounge at the top of the page, and then the middle to the bottom has microbrewery and taproom. And what Commissioner Will is specifically referring to is that on the previous page, on 120, the heading starts as restaurant, and then all of the numbered definitions on page 121 fall under restaurant.
You know, Commissioner Will, let me weigh in on this too, because I did remember this was talked about at the Plant Commission meeting, and I do agree, I think that was our intent here, was to separate out microbreweries and taprooms and not list them under restaurants. I agree with that, and I think if we want to make that change, this is the only area we would need to make that change, and then we would, I would just ask that the Plant Commission recommend these definitions for microbrewery and taproom just exist independently outside this restaurant definition.
Well, that would include bars as well, correct?
Yeah, that would include bars, and I know that's what the Plant Commission mentioned last time as well.
Okay. So you would just take that and move that into the section right after this?
Yes.
Okay. And I had just one observation, it's very small, this is on page 121, under the definition of microbrewery. We say that it may have a restaurant or pub on the same property. I don't think we define what a pub is. So I'm not sure if what we want to say here is that a microbrewery includes a bar as opposed to a pub, something like that. Should that be something that we've defined?
You're correct, and we don't have a definition for pub, so we would modify that term to bar.
Or how about it may serve, it may serve alcohol, instead of calling it a bar, yeah?
Well, that's what a bar is, right? So at least by this definition, so.
Yeah. So it falls under a bar, is what you're saying?
Right, a microbrewery may contain a bar, is what it says, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So it looks like, is the commission okay with those two changes, that the bar, microbrewery, and taproom is moved to its own section, and the word pub is replaced with bar when describing a microbrewery?
Yes, but for clarification, the staff and for me, you mentioned the restaurant, I agree you'd take that out. Restaurant's a restaurant, we're free to say may, a microbrewery may have a bar and may serve food. Are we just going to take, may have a restaurant out completely, and not even reference any kind of? And not even reference any kind of...
My recommendation is to move bar out as a separate item. And underneath the bar, if we want, we can have cocktail lounge, pub, microbrewery, taproom, wine tasting, all those things.
Well, yeah, I think a lot of those are fine. But a microbrewery might not have a restaurant or a bar in it, right? It could just be manufacturing essentially.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. If it's a manufacturing, then it can stand as a standalone. My major point is to separate restaurants for food services and a bar for alcoholic beverages.
I agree, it sounds like there's general agreement on the planning commission with that.
And that's consistent with the ABC's definition.
Yeah, and taproom falls under that as well.
Yeah.
So is that a change you guys can make tonight to vote on? Or you're going to have to come back to us with that one?
No, I think we can make that change today. But I'm, one of the other things I want to note, and it's probably good for the planning commission to weigh in. So if you notice the microbrewery definition, we use the production maximum up to 15,000 barrels. And that's typical with a lot of cities in terms of their definition of a microbrewery. But in the interpretation the planning commission made back in, I think it was 2013, the planning commission, to allow it in commercial areas, wanted to restrict it to 5,000 barrels. And so I think the way to address that interpretation, if that's what the planning commission still would like to observe, is that there be a footnote related to the permitted use table for microbreweries stating, in those zones which we identify as both mixed use and commercial, that microbreweries would be limited to yearly production of 5,000 barrels. So that would be consistent with interpretation the planning commission made in 2013. The planning commission could decide, well, we're okay with allowing the 15,000. But I think, I think, I think that's one way to address it for commercial and mixed use areas.
I think that works for me. I think that was the intent of the planning commission's decision.
I agree.
Well, yeah. I just don't have, I don't have a reference here, Gabriel, 5,000 versus 15,000. I don't have, I mean, what does that metric really even look like? I mean, what is it, what's the production rate? Is there any sort of trigger? Does, you know, something change with other licensing at a certain point, like over 10,000? I mean, what's, what's really the difference between the two other than, other than 10,000 barrels?
Yeah, thanks Commissioner. I think, I know Jennifer looked into this a little bit. But just to give you a size of scale for the city, none of the microbreweries exceed that 15,000 barrel capacity in a year. And, you know, I was talking to the owner of Lost Wind. So I think their capacity is like less than 9,000 barrels for sure. They don't, they don't think they even produce 9,000. So, so that gives you an idea. So some of our existing microbreweries operate, which are not in commercial or mixed use zones, are below that 15,000 threshold.
Okay, but that's, that's a market demand rate then, I guess. But why are we concerned about what their production rates are? Is it a spatial thing? Is it a ABC thing? I mean, I mean...
The reason, the reason we did it back then in 2013 was because they were asking to do this in a commercial zone as opposed to an industrial zone. So we, you know, obviously there's atmosphere and stuff for microbreweries. So we just wanted to keep it smaller than what you would have in a commercial, excuse me, in an industrial zone, so that it could be more conforming to a commercial zone. And if I'm not mistaken, I think they still need a conditional use permit, which means we would still have the opportunity to say whether we think it would work in that particular spot.
And Jim, I'll jump in there. My recollection was also the amount of shipping that would have to be done from one to 15,000 barrels. All of a sudden, it's basically true production and they're hauling a lot of stuff out of there.
Yeah.
Just as compatible for the other uses.
Just Chairman, one more thing to add is that in the interpretation the planning commission made, there was concerns that if, if it was anything more than 5,000 barrels, there would be an impact to residential properties, since they are located closer to commercial and mixed use properties.
Right, yeah. And I would say too, let's just be a little careful. I mean, that was a whole, you know, agenda item, you know, at that time that was kind of gone over. And it's actually allowed right now because of that. So I wouldn't want to dive in and kind of try to parse this out, you know, tonight. Because we don't have, we wouldn't have the information that we would need to...
Right, that's why I just want to know what logic was behind that particular number. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, well, please Jennifer.
And then just to close that conversation in regards to ABC. ABC doesn't codify the definition of microbrewery. But they do have in their license types, which is available online. Their guidance says that a microbrewery is 15,000 barrels or less a year.
Oh.
So there's that consistency there.
Okay, so that's good. That's where that number came from.
All right, so if there's no other comments, we'll let staff work on that and we'll move on to the other sections. Any other comments on this section? All right, then let's move on to...
Okay, and next slide please. Thank you. So the first two items here are suggestions from the San Juan Historical Society. The first one being adding the additional language that we were proposing for historic demolition to that for historic designation. And so we've incorporated that language in that section. The second one was to identify that the five-year inspections required for HPPAs are at the applicant's expense. And we've included that language as well. And next slide please. And the San Juan Historical Society asked about HPPAs and why they were limited to two specific types of properties. And we consulted with our attorneys on this. And that the Mills Act and the HPPAs apply to privately owned property, which is not exempt from property taxes. And the HPPAs provide that tax relief for property taxes whereby a property that's owned, say by a nonprofit, might receive tax relief through other mechanisms. And so we've made no changes there. And then the last one was the planning commission suggested that staff look for funding sources to update our Historic Resources Survey. And that is in progress. We've reached out to OPH and we are, sorry, OHP, and we are in conversations with them. There's a little bit of money left over for CLG grants this round, but really not much. Maybe just a couple thousand dollars. But the notice for the upcoming new round of funding is expected in the next month or so. And so we can certainly inform the planning commission when that comes out and consider what projects or efforts we want to fund or apply for funding for that. And that is the end of the historic section.
All right, any questions or comments on the historic section? All right, then let's move on to the nonconforming section.
And for this section, we have Christopher Wright on the phone to help us with that.
Okay, great.
Good evening. Uh, next slide please. So this first item relates to an exemption in our nonconforming ordinance for residences with a single car garage or carport built before 1962. And staff had explored removing the exemption if a majority of the single-family residents were demolished intentionally. And the planning commission agreed with that in principle, but had reluctance to use replacement costs as a means to measure when a majority of the residence was demolished. So in response, staff is proposing to use an existing measurement in the nonconforming ordinance for 50% or greater of the removal of the exterior walls as a means of assessing when a majority of the residence is demolished. That's the first item. The second item is related to accessory structures. There's a, quite a range of structures out there. And it can be therefore difficult to have a one-size-fits-all measurement for those situations. So staff did also propose using replacement costs for these structures. And the planning commission was open to that. However, there is some direction to using a published index and some other direction. So staff reached out to the building division to find out what indexes were used for assessing fees. There's a city council adopted fee schedule that is used regularly and accounts for a variety of different structures. So staff is proposing to use that as a basis for determining when 50% or more of an accessory structure is demolished. Next slide please. This third item is really just to make a note that staff was, is not proposing to change the manner in which replacement costs would be measured for accident damage. There's already existing, there's provisions, and those would be left intact. So just to make it clear what sort of changes we are proposing in this revised draft. Want to make a point that no changes would be made for accident damage. And then the last items are some, a request for information on minor architectural permits that have been provided in the packet. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments for Christopher on this item? Okay, no, thanks Christopher. We can move on to residential.
Thank you, next slide please. So for the residential section, the focus is strictly for accessory dwelling units. And this is quite a, I would say, interesting topic. And so the first slide here addresses the planning commission comments. And then we have additional slides to allow additional discussion. So the planning commission asked about sober living homes and how those relate to ADUs. And the city cannot regulate sober living homes, so there's no changes that were made. And then the planning commission also asked about sewer connection fees. And planning staff was informed that the wastewater cost of service study is estimated to be, will be potentially available for city council review in early 2021. And how does that relate to the ADU ordinance? Well, the ADU ordinance allows the city to charge some fees in proportion to the size of the ADU and the single-family dwelling unit. And so once the wastewater cost of service study is reviewed and is implemented, then we'll be able to charge wastewater fees for ADUs. So those are the two comments that planning commission had. And then I'm going to jump into additional discussion. Next slide please. So one of the concerns that the planning commission had, and to, to provide full information is most planning commissioners have across the state, is what discretion the city has when it comes to establishing updated ADU ordinances. And so I just wanted to clarify that as we've drafted in our code, which was vetted quite a bit with our legal team, is that we don't have any discretion for four types of ADUs. And those are listed on the slide above. Two situations with a single-family lot and two situations with a multifamily lot. Next slide please. But we do have discretion for other scenarios. And so those are the scenarios that don't fall into those first four categories. And where our discretion lies is in this particular section, which is development standards for ADUs that require an ADU permit. And so those are the ADUs that don't fall into the first four categories. And if you want to reference what those development standards are, they are start on page 185 in your packet. Next slide please. And so the reason that I'm bringing this up tonight is that we want to make sure that we're clear when we identify what the planning commission does have discretion in terms of recommendations for our ADU ordinance. So first, I wanted to bring up three provisions. And that the location of ADUs being in front of a home. So if an ADU is required to have an ADU permit, we could consider public comments that have encouraged us to allow this. But based on planning commission direction, we have not made any changes. And that is prohibited unless the applicant would be, would be successful in securing discretionary permit for that. The next one is for ADUs above garages. And we've had public comments requesting this build down. And then we also note that our current regulations, which understandably are moot due to these state laws, but our current regulations do allow ADUs above garages in situations that would allow them up to the legal primary dwelling height. And that's either the 25 feet of the zone or the existing dwelling height. We've made no changes, but if the planning commission wants to add that in, there is language proposed within your attachment. The next one is the two beder maximum. This is a provision that several jurisdictions in the state of California have used. And this would limit the intensity of ADUs that do require an ADU permit. Next slide please. And then these two changes are in relation to the historic provisions under ADUs. So the first one's relatively minor, just changes historical to historic. And then the second one is in regards to being consistent with our current requirement. Our current requirement is just requiring these, those particular provisions for historic properties. And the draft language that you saw in the previous version included within 300 feet. Staff had striked within 300 feet to be consistent with our current ordinance. Next slide please. And so then there's two other modifications that are not in the development standards. But we did want to make these changes to be clear. And so the first one is in regards to the type of discretionary permit process. So staff included in the previous version a conditional use permit requirement. But that really doesn't get at the concerns that we would have in regards to an ADU that would say be over a garage or in front of a residence. It's really the architectural component. And so we've stricken conditional use permit and inserted architectural permit. And it should be noted that those architectural permits would come to the planning commission. And then, let's see, and the second one is in regards to income reporting. So this provision was included in the ordinance and is used by some jurisdictions across the state of California. And it's in order to enable a municipality to use ADUs for certain levels of affordability when needing the housing units that the state requires each municipality to provide over an eight-year period. We've stricken this language. And the reason for doing so is that, one, we have a current method that staff uses that is quite efficient, more efficient than doing the income reporting, which would put a burden not only on the applicant, but an additional burden on staff. And then the second reason is that our government region that is in this area, specifically in Orange County, is working with the state to get a pre-approved affordability assumption. And they're quite along with that. And so that would be even more efficient. So we've stricken the language for income reporting. And next slide please. So that was it for ADUs. And if we want to go back to the last ADU slide, I'll go ahead and open it up to questions. I understand that was a lot of information.
Excuse me, any questions or comments on that? Any questions or comments on that item?
Yes, Jennifer, I have a few questions. If you can go back to the first page, that where the city has no jurisdiction.
There you go.
Number two, limited detached, what does that mean?
Great question. So the limited term for both number two and number four refer to specific provisions that the proposal must meet in order to qualify for that category. So in the case of number two, it specifically, if it meets the four-foot setback, first side and rear setbacks, it meets the height limitation of 16 feet. And then there's one other provision, as long as it meets those three provisions, the city must approve it through a building permit.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then the second question I think, okay, just want to make it clear, we have three levels of review or approval or lack of that. The first tier is a basic one mandated by the state. The city cannot do anything as long as they meet building requirement, building permit, building safety, and they will get a building permit. There's nothing, a planning department has to do with it. The second tier is administrative permit. Then the third tier is discretion or permit. Is that right?
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a very great, clear summary.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we can go on to, last but not least, state and federal law.
Sorry, I was on mute. So the comment that the planning commission had in this particular subject area was primarily focused on the changes related to cottage food industry. And the comments that the planning commission had made or questioned was in relation to the effort that staff was trying to modify the requirement or the process for a home occupation permit. Home occupation permits are currently required. They are, the process is consolidated with a business license for a home occupation permit. And due to that consolidated process, staff was proposing to strike the requirement for a home occupation permit in its entirety. Staff did do a little research, answered some questions in a little more detail in your attachment, but what the primary outcome of that research and consultation with code enforcement was that at this time, the effort to remove the requirement for a permit for home occupation really will take additional effort and additional coordination and even more so consideration on what that change will actually do to the requirements and how it would impact both the process and the city as a whole. So we've removed our proposal to eliminate home occupation permit, and it will remain as written. And that was it. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
I thought we were going to defer to a later date and bring it back to us, Eric.
A maybe.
A big maybe. Why wouldn't we do this tonight?
No, no, no. We're going to do it at a later date, I said. She came back with me.
Yeah, so the, it is staff's intent at some point to come back with a proposal to eliminate the permit requirement for home occupation. We don't have a timeline for that, and it will ultimately depend on staff capacity in terms of our reduced staffing level, and then also the priorities that take place. But it is our intent at some point to bring this back. Yes, you're correct.
I'm overdue.
So I think, given from what I've been hearing, we just need to get the text or the changes for what we talked about regarding microbreweries and taprooms and such. And once we see that, we might be able to make a motion. Gabriel, do you have that information for us, those changes?
And I can also jump in if need be, Gabriel.
I don't know if you're saying anything, Gabriel. If you are, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Thanks, Chairman. From what I recall, and I think what Commissioner Wu had mentioned, is three things under the restaurant definition would actually be their, if I'm correct, Commissioner Wu, their own separate definitions outside of restaurants. So bar and cocktail lounge would be independent. Enlisted the definitions, microbrewery as well, and so would taprooms.
Well, my thought is just a list of bar as an equivalent of restaurants. Underneath the bar, list taproom. And if we have any other thing like a pub, we can list underneath the bar. Cocktail lounge is equivalent of a bar.
Yeah.
Then microbrewery would exist as a standalone definition, as we talked.
Okay. So just to reiterate that, and I think staff is supportive of that, too. So bar or cocktail lounge would be independently defined outside the restaurant definition. Microbrewery would also be a standalone definition. Taproom would be, I guess you would say, kind of like a, it would be a subcategory of a bar.
Yes.
And it wouldn't be its own definition, and we're in agreement with that. So that would be the change that we would want to identify on here. Now, the other change is that under microbrewery, I think this was brought up by Commissioner Blackwell, is that removing the word pub and instead stating, using the word bar. And then the third thing that we would do, and it's a little bit of a change from what I mentioned, because I think some of the language is already there in your attachment three. So under, on page 112, under microbreweries, and also on page 113, we had mentioned that the 2013 interpretation mentioned a production that was limited to 5,000 barrels. Actually, don't think we need to have a footnote. I think the language is already there. Just unstrike out with limited production of 5,000 barrels and also include and tasting rooms. Because something very specific to the interpretation in 2013 is that those microbreweries that could be allowed in mixed-use zones and commercial zones have a tasting room component. So that's what I'd recommend there, those two areas under mixed-use and commercial where microbreweries is listed, unstrike out with limited production, but add up to 5,000 barrels, and then also leave in and tasting rooms. And then what we would strike out is what is mentioned here as defined in section 17.88. That's not necessary here. So those would be the three changes, just the reordering of the definitions that I mentioned, striking out pub and replacing with bar, and then what I mentioned for listing microbreweries under mixed-use zones and commercial zones.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Well, I agree.
That does sound good, Jim. I do want to touch on the microbrewery thing. If we're serving alcohol, we're serving alcohol, right? So even if it's a tasting room, one could go, and there's no limit on, you know, how many tastes, it's just the amount in the tasting, you know, in the glass. So you could sit there and taste all day, and the effect is still intoxication from alcohol. And so to me, I just need more clarification from somebody that helps me understand why we would parse that out. If they're serving, then it's a bar. If it's a microbrewery, they're a microbrewery. It's more industrial. If we're limiting the, you know, the barrels per day rate for commercial to 5,000, that's just because...
We're just saying it's possible for a microbrewery to have a bar in it. And of course, if it does, then it's managed like a bar.
And it's a bar.
And, well, it's a bar and a microbrewery. It's both.
Yeah, so the wine tasting would be, or beer tasting, and they would be a subset of a bar. Microbrewery is standalone only because it also has a production.
I don't know if I'm on board with that, because production is production, but drinking alcohol.
But we include the possibility of drinking alcohol in the definition of microbreweries, because it's not always done, but it's not unusual.
Okay, but are we going to talk, are we going to put a cap on the amount that's consumed?
Well, no, but there's a bar in there. We don't put a cap on the amount that's consumed in a bar. And we're saying it's a bar. If there, or could have a bar in it, I should say.
Yeah, a bar in a microbrewery is like a bar in a restaurant. It needs its own license in addition to the primary function. Where in a restaurant, the primary function is product of food services, and in a microbrewery, the primary function may be the production of alcohol. But it happened to have a bar. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, it's like BJ's Microbrewery. It turned into something else over time, but it's still a microbrewery. You know, these are food.
Yeah, you could say that they're a restaurant with a microbrewery, but I think by our definition, they're actually a microbrewery with a restaurant.
Yeah. I'm just trying to be consistent with what other, you know, my exposure to this elsewhere is. I mean, I'll talk through this with everybody. It just, if it's, if you're serving alcohol, it's a bar, you know.
Well, it is. We're not saying it's not. We're not saying that if you're drinking alcohol in a microbrewery, it's no different in terms of the rules and regulations as drinking alcohol in a bar. You still need conditional use permits and all that sort of thing.
Right, it is. It's a light industrial use with a bar inside it.
Way to put it.
Okay. I'm struggling, but, all right.
But it is a bar. It's got all the constraints of a bar. It's also got all the constraints of a light industrial use.
Oh, a license, too.
Yeah, okay. I just was thinking more in terms of, you know, having a subset. We have a category, which is, you know, what is bar, and then subsets would include, but not be limited to a pub, a microbrewery that, brewery that serves alcohol in any quantity, whether it's sipping, drinking it by the gallon, whatever it is, it's still serving alcohol. But if it's a standalone microbrewery and they're just doing production, and they want to be in commercial, they're limited to 5,000 barrels. Otherwise, anything above that would trigger, and they can only be allowed in industrial if there's more high production, we have traffic impacts, et cetera, as Mr. Crandall had mentioned. I just think anytime you're serving alcohol, no matter how you want to describe it, whether it be sipping, tasting, you know, swimming in it, whatever it is, you're consuming it, and it's a subset of a bar. It's just a bar.
That's what we're, well...
We all agree with it.
You could say the microbrewery is a subset of the bar, or the bar is a subset of the microbrewery. Either way, you're constrained by both of them the same way.
Okay. I may have misunderstood. I thought I heard it was going to be parsed out and be a separate line item.
No, no. A microbrewery that has a bar and it has a bar. So that bar is managed by the ABC, and it's got a condition of use permit and all that stuff.
Okay. I beg your pardon. Thank you for the clarification.
Well, what the staff is proposing, and I agree, is that microbrewery will have its own definition outside of a restaurant and a bar.
Yes, but we're also saying that a microbrewery could include a bar or a restaurant.
That's right.
We're all in final agreement here.
Yeah. Okay, so those are the only changes, it sounds like. So if someone wants to try and make a motion... Unless you're going to make me do it again.
Commissioner Wu getting us talking.
I'll make a motion, but Gabriel, I need you to provide the language regarding a restaurant and a bar. So, oh, where is that resolution page?
Page seven.
Okay.
Let me read it.
I move to adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the City of San Clemente, California, recommending a city council approve and adopt an ordinance for a city-initiated amendment, CA 20-035, to the City of San Clemente Municipal Code Title 17 zoning, updating erroneous text, ambiguous definitions, and standards, and a modification for consistency with the general plan and a state and a federal law. What's the modification? Gabriel, go ahead.
Okay, with the modifications being that the bar and cocktail lounge definition is a standalone definition, and that the microbrewery definition is also a standalone definition, the taproom definition is placed as a subset of a bar and cocktail lounge. So it's not a standalone definition, but a subset of a bar and cocktail lounge. So that is the changes for the definition section, which is section 17.88.030. And then under microbrewery, what I forgot to mention, definition that pub is, we strike out pub and instead replace the word pub with bar. And then going to table 17.36.020 and table 17.40.030, that microbrewery is listed, that the striked-out language that says with limited production and tasting rooms, that we unstrike that language, and it remains, but instead strike out as defined in section 17.88. And that would be all the changes needed.
Motion by Wu, second by Brown. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Ruin votes aye, passes unanimously. So, good work, Jennifer.
Yes, thank you.
And Christopher. I know you guys have been working very, very hard on this, and thanks for putting it together in a way that made it as easy as possible for all of us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Item nine, new business. Does anyone have any new business? Item 10, old business. There's no old business. Reports of commissioners and staff. Does anyone have any reports? Okay, doesn't look like it. I will, I want to mention one thing. I've been struggling with this a little bit, because I need some help on something from you guys. You know, chairs, the job is to, you know, lead fair and efficient meetings. And one thing that I think that I've been seeing, and I'm willing, very happy to be wrong on this, but I think I've been seeing that particularly in our Q and A sessions, we might be getting a little bogged down sometimes in the way maybe that we're approaching staff, asking questions. Sometimes we've got some long preambles to make some points, and we want to be careful with that, because it might not be fair to other planning commissioners. But the main thing is, is to, you know, we want, you know, to tease out the best information we can from staff and make sure that they're as prepared as possible, prepared as possible to help us when we ask these questions. So I definitely, I hesitate to say anything, because I definitely don't want to discourage anyone from asking questions and digging in, because there's a lot of great points that get, you know, pulled up and discussed, and, you know, I always get some new perspective when I'm in a meeting. But I think one thing, and I'll encourage you to do, that I know, you know, early on for me, I didn't do to my detriment... for me, I didn't do to my detriment, and that's, you know, make a lot of use of staff between the meetings. So when we see, you know, if you've got questions, or you find yourself, you know, saying, oh, I got to ask staff about something, and particularly if it's something kind of open-ended, or you think that there's maybe a little staff error or something like that, those are real good things to go to staff for, because if nothing else, with me, it really clarifies my thinking on that particular subject. And if they, you know, happen to have an error in a report, or there's an open-ended question like, you know, what's staff perspective on XYZ, they can, first of all, give you information on it, kind of in a, in a little more, little less formal forum, but also be prepared in the meeting for those kinds of things. It helps to prepare them. And it doesn't mean, I know for me, too, when I ask staff a question, if I, you know, if I'm in a meeting with them, like in the office, or I've given them a call, I may still ask the question in the planning commission, because I think it's maybe important for other planning commissioners to hear, or I think it's something important for the public to hear. So again, it's not a discouragement from asking that question even in the meeting. But if you cover it, you know, with staff, you know, you may find you don't need to ask, ask the question, or you may find, okay, this is a good question to make sure we bring up, but now your, your thinking on it is more focused, staff is prepared for it, they know it's going to come up, so they, you know, they'll have an answer ready to hand for you and for the public. And so I think that that might help our meetings go a little more efficiently, so we're not, you know, kind of dragging at the end of the evening and that sort of a thing. So, like I said, I'm willing to be wrong about that, but I'm putting it out there as maybe some, a little bit of, a little bit of an observation, and just to encourage you to work more with staff as you're gearing up and doing your meeting planning.
Well, Chair, thank you for your direction. I think one thing you made, as a chair's privilege is that if you feel that discussion is too long, you may make a motion to move the question. In other words, limits the debate. As long as you can get a majority to support it, then we just cut off the debate at a certain point.
That is certainly an option, but there's always that balance, right? And different, different chairs handle it differently, right? There's that balance of being fair and being efficient, right? And are you going to err on the side of being efficient or err on the side of being fair? Sometimes you have to make those choices. And, and you're right, but you're right, that is a, that is a tool in the toolbox, you know, to say, I'm going to make a motion, and that's going to like force things forward. And so, so I might just do that. But, thank you. All right, anything else on that, or any other report anyone may have? And if not, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I will adjourn to the next regular meeting, the study session and planning commission, which will be held on 7 October, 2020 at 6:00 PM via teleconference.
Second. Motion by Brown. Sounded like Crandall got in there first. Second by Crandall. Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Ruin votes aye, passes unanimously. So, got a lot done tonight.
All right, guys. Get some sleep. Good night.
It's a long meeting. Good night.